You gotta do it.
That's amazing.
I'm literally in my work shirt.
You only see the hat when you head.
Well, that's awful.
Call to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Quatworthy, here. Councilmember Darrow, here. Councilmember McAdams, here. Councilmember Connell, here. Councilmember Osho, here. Mayor Grant, here. As we advertise in the Courts of Public Meetings Act, glad with all and all their in. We have the first, the first part of business will be open to the public. Any motion open to the public?
Motion.
Second, all, uh, on paper, right? Now open to the public.
Kathleen Moss, three oh six Christiana Street. Uh, I have a couple of questions. One, uh, is on borough homes. When somebody applied two years ago, which was twelve ten of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the second one was the new one that you sent out, the new letter, which was January seventeenth of twenty-five at eleven fifty-two A M. Uh, the problem with this is the letter didn't come, had to get another letter. So it was taken from there. Now we're talking two years that this person's name has been in. Other people have been put in houses, which is fine, but two years. Somebody who applied January fourteenth of twenty-five is number one on the list. The one for two years is twenty-two on the list.
Okay, uh, I can explain something briefly anyway. As of the first of the year, it's been totally revamped. Because of that problem.
But shouldn't you have taken those names that applied way back then to see if they wanted to be on the list again? Why?
Every, you know, uh, we just, uh, decided to start fresh. It's, it's the way things have ran forever and, you know, there's, there's been, uh, discussion, how come this person got that? And then so we tried to eliminate that. Uh, Christine Alchance was put in charge of revamping that because her whole life has been working with rentals and, uh, low to moderate income and things like that. So we're working by the book now.
So you take somebody who applied two years ago.
Yeah.
Somebody who just applied.
Well.
And they are number one, and the other one it makes them number twenty-two.
Well, it, you know, and the number really doesn't mean anything because right now, now, hear me out.
If I understand that.
No, well, let me.
But you should not have. To me, you should have taken the old people, the people that applied back then. Ask them if they still wanted to be on the list. If they didn't, that's fine.
That, the, the town was, um, and most of the people, I think it was at one time, there were fifty people recently on that list.
And that's fine.
Every one of them were told that you have to reapply. And, and re.
But they weren't.
Well.
A letter, a letter.
Yeah, a letter went out.
The new letter. Okay, but that letter did not go to that person. So I had to get a new letter. She filled that out and turned it in. So they went by that date, not even the first letter, but the second letter.
Cass, you know, you got the information highway here. Things don't get by people. If you didn't get a letter, you, you know better than anybody that, you know, the news about the borough homes or who to, who to talk to.
I, I know, but that's not the point. And I did mention to you, and I mentioned to you, and I mentioned to Trish. And that this person was looking, and I mentioned in there that this person was.
It's part of the procedure now, according to the, the way we set up.
But you honestly think that procedure is fair?
Uh.
Seriously.
What, what we have now?
Yeah. What's going from that to what you have now?
Yeah.
What you have now is fair. I'm not saying it's not fair.
It's, it's right.
But to go from that to that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what, I mean, what else?
I need to know, man. I'll tell you.
Listen, if we've made an, an exception for that one person that you're talking about, there was, like I said, I looked at the list and I was told there were fifty people on the list. I said, no, there is no list. What we're gonna do is as of January one, we're gonna reapply.
Right, so there isn't a list though.
And as you qualify now. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know I could refer to, but we've had, as soon as the letter went out, the very next day, people were knocking on the door at eight thirty getting in to get on that list.
But if that person didn't receive that letter?
Well, I can't speak for that.
Cause it comes to my house, so I know whether they received it or they didn't.
Oh, you didn't get it, you're saying?
Not me.
I mean, it did come to your house.
No.
But anyway, it's new. It's a new system. We're trying it out. We think it's fair. And by the way, what we do, there's a fee to, uh, we would do.
Correct.
We would do background checks, we would, uh, a lot of work.
There is a fifty dollar fee. I understand that.
So, and then there's a requirement legally, uh, because we're renters, right? There's a requirement legally that you have to make a certain amount of money according to. So all that information you come in, now people may be on the list, but that doesn't mean, uh, that that they're number fifteen.
Does qualify. I'm telling you right now.
And that's how, that's how it's gonna work, uh, from now on. That's how it's gonna work. So, I would say if you're, if you're trying to get a borough home here, get on the list, qualify, and it's a no refund. Actually, it's a no refund. I can tell you how many, I don't know how many, uh, Brian will probably speak to it, but, how many came to apply, they, they didn't have to figure it out. Some of them didn't have jobs and some of them don't even have bank accounts, but they knew people. You know, I've been here such and such years.
Saying, you know, people have been put in ahead for two years.
Well, it's, it's all new and nobody's getting put ahead. I guarantee that.
I just don't think it's right that somebody who applied in January would be number one. When you had other people that applied way back when.
Well.
And that's my opinion.
You're entitled to that. I'm sorry you don't agree with, but you know, you can't make anybody, everybody happy. We're trying to make it fair.
All right, let me ask you this question. Was that decided by the whole council or just by one person?
No, absolutely it was by the whole council. We've been discussing this. We've been trying to revamp it, how to be fair. You know, I can speak to a little bit of it. Um, so I had, you know, spoken to, you know, Christine about this. I, I know she's not here. I know you're pretty dominant with the two, but I think it was actually near to eighty, but, uh, the process was like a, uh, like a notebook, you know, kind of handwritten. Um, it was like if like, it, it just wasn't a great thing. So, you really didn't even know when they had applied from the previous time, right?
The dates written, yes you do. Yes, you do.
I'm sure you have access to a kind of all the cabinets in there and then all keys.
I don't have to all the cabinets. I mean, you don't have to be nasty.
I'm not being nasty.
Yeah, you are. You're being sarcastic.
So I, I, but, um, so it's just one of those things. I saw it. I said, there's no way that this could be the way it is. Christina turned this thing around and now it's like a well-oiled machine where there's these dates, like there's things like this. Could it have been better? I mean, it could have been better from the start, but I think this was kind of ripping the Band-Aid off to the point of, it's going to be better. It's going to be more fair. It's gonna be a lot more transparent, kind of moving forward. And I think that there's a lot of positives to the borough, uh, which I could list, but I think what I liked very much was that for the people, it now makes it, um, significantly more fair and then follows that path. I can't speak to when the letters went out and kind of who got it, who didn't. I mean, I know you're across the street here and I know when people mail me things, it all depends on what happens and I obviously trust that. You know, infrared sticky note, but I, um, I just think it's one of those. There was gonna be some mistakes made from the fact that we have to start this process from scratch. We have to do it as fair as possible. Um, as the mayor said, I personally swear by the new process. I think it's great. I think it follows all that management. But this one, we could do some research on if this slipped through the crack and I'd be happy to take the information and that, do the research and then get back to you personally on it. Um, but, um, I can say that it wasn't a great process before. The transition from not great to great sometimes takes a little bit more effort than necessary, but now moving forward, it will be a great process. You might be one of the few things that may, and I'm gonna say again, may have possibly slipped through the cracks of, you know, not an imperfect system, but from making it from very imperfect to, I'm not gonna say state of the art, but I'm gonna say fantastic now. Um, there was gonna be some little kind of casualties and.
The process has never been perfect.
It's going to be very.
I've been here over fifty some years and it's never been perfect.
No, it wasn't.
Again, my thing is for somebody to go to number one. When somebody who applied two years ago is now number twenty-two.
We can't speak to the exact instance, but if you want to give me the, the information, I'd be happy to run down what happened, start to finish on that and why. And then if you have a, if there is real cause for like something negative like that happened there, we'd be happy to get back to you about that. Cause maybe we made a mistake, right? It's a few hands laying in the pot and obviously it's, it's, you know, the U S Post Office, which is, you know, brilliant. Um, so, um, give us the information of what happened. We'll research it and we'll speak to you personally about what happened, start to finish.
Okay.
Cass, let me finish one, one thing where I do want to say, I would say to anyone that's applying for that, and you were right, it was like eighty, eighty greens. Don't, if you have applied, if they do apply and they're qualified, but there's nothing available, stay on the list because the list is moving. Because the majority of people, you know, we're, we brought it out in the dark ages with rent, renters. We have never made any money on these, uh, houses, so to speak. And it takes, and people call, listen, people call and say, my shutter fell. In, in homes, if you got, if you're renting a home, I say get it, go get a ladder.
But who fixed it when you rented it? We fixed it when we rented it. We didn't go to the borough.
No, you didn't.
The only thing the borough gave you was paint.
You treated it like it was your home because of. So yes, I had a borough home and I came to this town. So, and, and I think a lot of other people did, but, I would encourage anybody on that list, stay on it and just check in. And eventually we're gonna have it online when you can, or you can go from your home.
That's fine. I just wanted to make you aware.
Give us the information and research stuff. If, if it means something to you, which it seems like it does, let's at least give you a good response. You?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in public? Um, I'm gonna recuse myself from up here right now. I have a thing I'd like to bring up in public. Cool? Stick your name. Oh, oh, well, I'll do the whole deal. Uh, John Quatworthy, Fourth Street, Brookline, New Jersey. Um, wanna run something by you guys. Uh, so I really, one of the things that I love, and I think it's a really nice small town thing, is that we have the street signs everywhere. Um, certain ones are official, like the cats, some are more, um, like I love the Cass's Corner. I, I think that's great. Uh, I know it's probably significant work to change the name of something. Um, we have this great little bowling alley down the street that I worked at. And, um, uh, and this also plays in the name, which I'm, you'll be happy when you hear the end of this, obviously, but I'm, I'm gonna take a little bit of a journey because I, I. So it's been there since nineteen sixty-six, uh, kind of staple of the community. I grew up all in there. I met my wife in there. I'm sure a lot of you guys have, uh, I would say almost everybody in town has been there, right? It, it, it's one of those. Um, it's now a third generation. It means a lot to me. Uh, it's called Westbrook Lanes. Now, we have, um, Old Salem Road, which is a nobody grows, right? It's just us, the bar on there, um, you know, your designer tees, the one place that's been there our entire time and I have no idea what they do, nor do I care to find out since I'm this old. I think I'm good to live with the mystery. Um, but is there a possibility that we would entertain changing that road to Westbrook Lane? Or if we could have the sign right below it and it's just say, you know, I wouldn't know the word for that, where it's not really the name, but it just knows it's that in there. Um, I'd like to put that out there. Uh, I'd be happy to run down the paperwork. I'd be happy to do all of that, not as a member of the chair up there, but as a private citizen. What do you think? I like. Yeah? Yeah, I like, I mean, you know, it's been there since what? Nineteen sixty-six. It's been Westbrook Lanes since nineteen sixty-six. Earlier than that. Yeah.
It was longer than that, than the family.
It's Westbrook Lanes. Yeah, I don't know, other than postal, uh, you know, uh, crime. There's a lot of stuff to it. You know, just change the McAdams way was, uh, with the, you have to let bribes and all that, the Comcast, every, every company's gotta be notified. And if they don't change it, GPS is for fire departments, for police department, they all gotta be, uh, updated and stuff like that. It takes time. So, but it can be done. It, it just takes a little bit of time. You know, it was dirt road. I don't think it was ever named. No, the Old Town Road is actually the oldest road in Brookline. Wow. Yeah. Wow. Maybe we should, you know, name it the. I'm not joking. That's the oldest road in. The oldest road in Brookline. It sounds good, but then my whole thing would be null and void and I'm not gonna give up on that for the old town of Brookline. Plus, the oldest road in Brookline would take up significant, uh, real estate on one of those green signs. Probably have to get it to like curb at that point. But Westbrook Lane, quick, easy lane to be small dot, you know, right? I like the challenge.
Please want to do what?
No, I mean, I don't. I, I just. We'll see how this shakes. I will start high and then a little bit, you know, if you get me. So they can go with that and be happy, but I'm gonna answer the street. Yes, not bad. Don't tell them that I said we got. Are, are you, you want to get a consensus from the council here or? I would say the streets committee would be, discuss it and then push a court. You know, I like, I never thought of something like that. I don't think it's. Since the zone by, I would like to have the engineer or something to zone by the Borough of Brookline before, or the dirt road. And then they put the road in to make a connection and make that road where from Creek Road to Route one thirty. And then that became the major food fair and they, and they fixed it. The DOT ended up owning it? We would have to check to see if. That's one, that's one issue I think I have to be resolved before we even go into the next step. That's one thing I don't know.
I know that municipality means that, like, we mean.
We mean the lights.
Yeah.
And we pay for the, the streetlights there.
And we plow.
Yeah. There are no physical addresses on that little street, right? Uh, no, I think they, well, actually as a lie, I think the P S E and G building is on there, like, but it's a substation. There's no one ever there. Like, it's only used for, uh, a relay.
And then the, uh, she runs with.
They don't use, they don't use Sandler as their address. Do they use the Sandler? I don't think they use it.
Well, they perhaps they use it.
They might have used it on, they might have used it. They might have used that too. And the, uh, a t-shirt please use it. So, okay, John. Yeah, I, I will have the, uh, street committee take a look at it and, you know, what the next meeting will, you know. Uh, I, I have no prob, I don't know if anybody wants to say anything about that or anybody in the public that has anything to say about it.
No problem.
No problem.
No problem.
If it's, uh, if it's one of those things where it requires a lot of paperwork and things like that, it's one thing that I adore above all else is red tape. I would be happy to do that. Um, and if you got any help, let me know. Thanks for the consideration. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, John. Keep that my ideas coming. I like that. Thank you, thank you. That was a selfish one. That doesn't benefit. Uh, anybody else? No? Yeah, you can approve one? Need a motion for this? Motion.
Second.
On favor. Uh, we're moving on. We have, uh, item discussion, Opine Farm, uh, National Land Trust representative we have here. He's gonna speak for us. Please say your name and.
Adam Hinker.
You're good, there you are.
Okay, so my name is Russell Bird. I'm the vice chair of the Opine Farm Natural Land Trust in Deppard. If you're not familiar with it, the five oh one C three that acquired fifty-two acres, that's headwaters of the southern branch of Big Timber Creek. Uh, but, uh, for me, I've actually, uh, worked on different projects, including I'm the vice president of the Runby Chamber of Commerce. And I, I'm work with their green team to help them get the silver status with the dirt sustainability. And, uh, and, and with that engagement, they had engaged the National Park Service about their Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance Grant, which is a technical assistance grant. And I had asked them if they would, uh, entertain it with Opine Farm. So we went through the process of two, what they call scoping meetings, before they invited us to make application for this River Town or, uh, Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance Grant. In particular, to put in place one of their programs called River Town V P U. Okay, it's a program the National Park Service has done around the country. And basically it's to, uh, assess the viability of using Big Timber Creek as a recreational waterway. So at this point, um, I don't, I don't know if everybody have received the copy of, of this.
All, all yes. Skip ass, yes. I think I did. Can I, or maybe I didn't. Can I have one of those? I can say, I can.
I could send it to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna send it. I don't think I've already done.
Okay, so, so that kind of outlines the program. It's a five-step program. Uh, basically the first step is that I get all the stakeholders together and, I'm almost finished that part where they go on to part two, which is where we do assessments of each of the six municipalities that have agreed to partner. If, if you also agree. Uh, so it would be, uh, uh, Brookline, Westville, Detford, uh, Closer Township, Runby and Belmont. Uh, uh, all but I perceived, uh, resolutions all by from yourself and, uh, Closer Township at this point. Can I vote that?
Right? Yeah, yeah, he spoke at, uh, Westfield a couple, uh, like a couple of months ago.
Okay, yeah, they passed it in December.
Yeah, we passed it in December, yeah.
Right, right. Um, so basically it's just a, a study, you know, to see the viability. The, the step two is really an assessment. It is an online assessment and there's an onsite assessment. In talking to each of the other, we, we call them stakeholder municipalities, kind of the reference that Park Service uses. Um, they will help recruit volunteers for Brookline. Because they, to, to do your assessment, because they want a fresh set of eyes. Okay, they don't want Brookline to have Brookline's assessment. It might not be, you know, so the, you know, we would ask you to help us, uh, recruit volunteers to, you know, do one of the other towns and, and their assessment. So there, there's the online and then there's the, uh, onsite, uh, assessment. On June eighth, we already have a, um, an event scheduled. Uh, Opine Farm has a monthly program called Walking Wild. And each June it has been a kayak canoe hike on Big Timber Creek.
That's cool.
Uh, last year we did go from Opine Farm down to, uh, Green Acres Vanilla Park in Runny. Uh, we would like to extend it to Fort Nassau Park. Um, we, we've already, uh, made arrangements for, uh, transportation. That if they were to come here, we could pick up their canoes and them and transport them back to Opine Farm.
Sure.
Um, and we could use that day to do the onsite assessments. The.
Little tie in there.
Yeah, well, trying to be efficient. Um, so that would help us finish that part of the onsite assessment. Then after we gather the assessments in each of the towns, we will have a workshop of what we learned. Okay, we will pull a copy of everybody's master plan and see what you have written in there as far as your recreational use, if there is any for, you know, Big Timber Creek and, uh, make recommendations by the end of the year at what you may consider. Uh, part of it is assessing what assets you have that could lend to such a, a project and not just in, you know, where we can slip in or, or pull out a canoe or kayak, but, you know, think about the economic effect. Okay, the Park Service really does believe that if we do this, we can draw people from North Jersey. Okay, so they're gonna need a place to stay overnight. They're gonna need a place to have meals. Okay, so there's really an economic benefit to it too, to each of the towns and.
So it's primarily for recreation, basically.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to match the criteria that the Park Service is looking for. You know, so it is helping wellness, but it is also economic development is a big part of it and community engagement. You know, so the people, you know, becomes a, a lifelong thing.
Yeah.
You know, it's been forever since Big Timber Creek was really used as recreational waterway. I mean, here you guys have a marina, okay, so you can, get out to the.
Big fish, big fish here. There's eagles. We have eagles.
Right, it's all coming back. And see, that, that's also part of it.
Right.
What we would like to include and was a little bit beyond the National Park Service in the first year is some of, some of the things that each of the stakeholder partners will find that we can share the information about. Uh, in talking to Westfield, you know, we do pollinator guardians at Opine Farm. Well, guess where pollinators travel on water? You know, so, you know, we'll share what our, our plant inventories are. Uh, there, there's been complaints about mosquitoes, that houses.
Well, that's.
You know, all, all those things that can be a little bit more environmental. And today, New Jersey American Water agreed to assist us in this program. So I'm real excited about that. Uh, but we're looking to have water samples from each of the areas to see if it's safe. You know, I, I don't think we're gonna get there swimming, but, you know, the type of fish that start coming back. You know, things like that. So, so we're asking that you, you pass a resolution, I believe I provided a sample, you know, saying that you will partner with Opine Farm in this project.
And I, I spoke to Russell, obviously, we, we had the conversation. So I just wanted him to come before everybody else, everybody else kind of get near on it. And I just want to clarify two things. So just, it's a resolution, obviously, to participate in the study, but there's no fees. We're not paying anything.
Just some time from, from volunteers. We, we would like at least one, if not two people who will be responsible for, you know, your, your part of it and helping us share the information on your social media platforms or on your website or, you know, that type of thing. And join us in the workshops. We will be inviting, you know, the mayor and council to workshops, uh, you know, to attend.
Sounds great.
But that, that's, that's about it. It, it's more work hours, but no money required, right?
I tell you what, I love the sound of this. Yeah, no, it's awesome, man. I was really excited when Russell reached out. Um, so, and, you know, moving forward, we can get that on the next, the next meeting, get that resolution. We'll get it passed for you. Uh, we'll definitely be involved. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we'll probably be involved with it. And I'm really excited about June eighth and having people come down to our town. Sounds amazing. So it's really cool. It's definitely something we can get together as a, I think a council to make a little day off.
You think Fort Nassau Park will work?
You know, let me say though, uh, at one time Fort Na, Fort, Fort Nassau was believed to be a bookworm. And as you know, it's actually Gloucester. They have, they claim that, that Fort Nassau is actually in Gloucester. Really? We're claiming that back? Yeah. Well, I, I would say if you guys remember, I'm actually sure. No, 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 no. Actually, what I'm saying is, yeah, it's actually Fort, yeah, events that, that they're in Gloucester, Fort, not Nassau. But what I was saying is, they, um, we had a, if you guys remember, we had, uh, uh, a boat pulled up at, right at the end of our street here. And it looked like, uh, had outriggers and all kinds of equipment on it. They believed that group, I don't know if you remember, Ryan. I don't remember. They believed that, that the, during the war, uh, they scuttled a boat here, which they, and then it was things on the boat. Now, they found, uh, all kinds of artifacts down there and they shut us down. They said, uh, and then they pulled out. And, but they believe Fort Nassau was actually here. Where at? Right at, at some point at the point, they, they say that there was a ship scuttled. And all the sailors on it fled into here, Brookline, and probably knitted and, you know, they, they say there was possible. They sunk the boat, didn't they? Yeah, yeah, they scuttled it. Yeah, uh, they blew it up or sunk it and then came into Brookline and then eventually, you know, tradition and all that stuff. But some said that there was actually a lot of, uh, yellow metal on that. Dabloons? I don't know about dabloons, but, because it was, you know. But what, what, what did happen, what did happen, it, it, uh, generated a bunch of people that, you know, scoped it and checking stuff down there. And there's a guy that does town, he, I, you've probably seen him. He'll go, he's all over town and he's kind of, he opens the back of his car up and he shows you what he found so far. And he's gotten, uh, crosses and, and coins he found down the long waterfront. So it's just.
There's a lot of history too.
Yeah, there is.
You know, Gloucester Township is trying to include, um, the Marshall House, which. Gloucester Township is trying to include, um, the Marshall House, which. Some people know it's Martha's Farm, but it's, it's very destination. On the other side, the, the Willoughby House was built in, you know, too. You know, and, and that's our headquarters. So there's a lot of history on Big Timber Creek, yeah.
And I think it'll work for you, um, you just have to tide the, you have to know where the tides are, right? If it's low tide, you're not getting in, so.
Well, now for, so June eighth, uh, twelve thirty four, the tide right here.
Look at this guy.
Oh, yeah, you're good, Dan.
You're amazing.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually thinking that. They're either gonna come down and try to ride it back up. Or we were even, now we haven't worked out where we could ride it in and then take it back. But yeah, you can find the inward tide and actually ride it all the way up. And it's about six and a half miles to Old Pine Farm there.
That's great.
I want in.
Me too, I, I think I'll do this.
Yeah, thank you.
So you can assess for different.
Maybe a small town, I think a more a small town.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Moving on, um, we have the current ordinances that are going in for a second reading. Um, does, does anybody have any questions on those ordinances that we've already stated? Uh, they're, they're going for the public hearing on the next meeting, anybody have any thing to talk about that, or does everybody go with those ordinances? Alright. One new ordinance we're, uh, working on, um. The solicitor is going to be drafting another ordinance to adjust our land use, uh, rules. To allow for alternates for some reason, it's not in there, but we've had alternates for the last thirty years. Apparently not showing in our ordinance that we have it, so we caused some, uh, you know. Clerical thing that we have to clean up on that, so we're gonna get an ordinance on to the next agenda, we'll be in ordinance for that for the first reading. And, uh, they can take care of that, right, so, um, so.
What does that mean, right? What's that, what does that mean, so allow alternates?
Uh, because, uh, say if somebody's not here for a land use, the alternate can step in and, and we, we usually have two alternates. Uh, on the committee, we're gonna elect the second alternate, but we couldn't select it until we know, until we adjust its ordinance, so. We'll have it on the next meeting, we'll have that, uh, thing, so. It's just a clerical thing, we, we've been doing it for many years, but we, we should follow the code, uh, with that.
We're tightening up, is that?
Tightening up the code, tightening up the code. Ryan's tightening up everything. So, um, uh, we only have like a couple of resolutions, obvious to revolution that the land trust, I'll add that. And authorizing the acceptance of a certified list from the Brooklyn Fire Department for low staff members, that's the only ordinance we have at this point. Um, there's a couple others that, uh, might come up after discussions that I have coming up. Um, so that's, anything, anybody have any other question on resolutions? So we can move right along. Additional items of discussion, the public, uh, the fire department mutual aid plan. Um, they redid the mutual aid plan, it's right here, I need everybody to go to the third page for both paperclips and sign under your name. So if you want to start that process, you can go through it, there are two copies, third page in. Um, so we can get that taken care of.
And what do you, what do you sign off on there?
What's that, it, it's a mutual aid plan, so it's like how, how dispatches from the fire department, so John couldn't make it tonight, but. It basically is like, it's a, it's a call box, so when the phone now, it tells you who goes to what, if it's. The determination of how bad the situation is, if you need ambulance, if you need like police, you need, that's, that's, I think. That Captain might be able to explain it even better, but I, that's, that's basically it, could you explain it any differently or?
That's pretty much it. Same, same mutual, mutual aid agreement. Players, or who's up next.
Is this the Bellmore thing that we spoke about? Yeah, same thing, but we took, uh, they, they've down extra, they're, we actually used Westfield at the first call box and then.
We're keeping it the way it is now, not the kind we.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, well, no, it changes to what we spoke about. They got approved by the county, that's what this, this is.
Good.
They got approved by the county, they, they, uh, John won his argument. There we go. Yeah, he won the argument, so it changed to what the call box.
So why don't we make a change?
Uh, because, uh, situations, I can't really discuss how valid, public with certain situations, but. Um, we, uh, but that, but the committee is aware, they've talked to, to John.
About the changes.
He's not aware.
I'm not aware. Okay, whoever was on the board, like, last year, at the end of December we met.
Christine was in it, um, uh, we can catch up, John does it more kind of elephant, neither me. But basically, long story short, it's the idea of, um. You need to be able to get calls out to other places considerably faster than we're doing right now. And we were kind of lumped into maybe something that we shouldn't have been. So basically he had said, I've been fighting a long time to get us into a, kind of like a higher call path. Um, not to be tied in with other places that are significantly busier, so basically our response time should be. Increased overall.
And the distance, and the distance was shortened, because one of them was a one point one mile and the other one is like, uh. Point six or something like that to get the distance here and, and if, if we were getting a ladder truck from.
You'll get Deppard instead of Collinswood.
Could we just like not sign until we get clued into what we're signing off on?
Absolutely.
Like we're asking people to sign, but we don't even know what we're signing. Like you're making a change, we don't know why.
Yeah, you're making a talk to them about.
It's a fun response.
No, I'm not for it, I just. It's, it's a, it's a smart move, yeah. Um, he's not here to explain it, um.
He said, he said at last minute, he wasn't gonna make it tonight.
I, I've been spoken to about this since probably mid last year, but it was, um, the new fire, um. I forget his name, I'll tell him, I always forget, but he is in my phone, very dialed in.
He was very farly.
Yeah, um, it was kind of, they worked in collaboration on this, so it's had a lot of eyes on it. Um, what I'm saying is, is it kind of makes sense, but he has all the details of. Basically, we were.
With traffic too, right?
Yeah, at this part of the state, for some reason, just because of where it used to be, and now we're just like everybody closer, like Collinswood wasn't involved. And they're only, you know, point eight mile from where you were, but somebody that was two miles was involved. So it just cuts down on the response rate based on your geography.
Alright.
And we open up to department heads and, uh, council members. Oh, no, wait, we gotta go to.
I mean, we don't really need to have that big of a discussion on it. It's just, um, those bushes are dead and it's such a beautiful green area. I think if we add some color and just do some minor landscaping improvements, it'll be really nice. It won't take much, I already talked to, um, Marty from Westfield, he is willing to build some guys into the schedule. So whenever we're ready, what do you guys think? Some flowers, I didn't realize that we got a working sprinkler system there, so that really is a game changer. We'll be able to maintain it and keep it green through the summer, I think it'll look really nice. With the new benches, anybody know when the new benches are coming?
That's what we do too.
I think they're in, it's just.
They're in all the time. Do we just know about, that's like, if we haven't run in a long time, is that still?
They do it in some TLC, but it's not, not impossible, it's not like, it's been blown off. Without that, I would say, worse keeps marrying, not for the work.
We can set them all the time, right?
Absolutely, we still have last year.
I, I mean, that's it, really.
Do we need to do resolution on that?
No, no, it's just.
And it'll be, actually, you know what, I want to repurpose, I don't know if anybody's seen the, the green area out in front of the. Ractory over here, I'm gonna take a look, it's starting to sprout up. So I'd like to use some of that in Old Pine Farm, so it really won't be a minimal cost.
That's nice.
And you were talking about taking that out last year, right? Flipping, flipping or something.
Cause that stuff just takes off.
Like a hostage?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That was great.
It's beautiful everywhere, because it's years of growing and not really being maintained, it's a good thing.
I got just a person.
And, and that's like. And I think that with, with Harry, we'll be able to maintain it, and he, he is definitely not gonna let a weed grow. So I think it'll be nice, so we'll get started in a couple of weeks if everybody's okay with that, right?
Yeah, so you want, with, with every specific thing you want done, taken care of, either get it from Mike or Marty, whatever, and we'll get that right away. And we need to order, um.
Just a couple bushes, I mean.
And talk to help out, get an order. Yeah, well, that's what we have to rip out of, I know there's not much.
There isn't much.
We took a tree out of there not that long ago.
Right, no, there isn't much, I, I, it's not gonna be that much, it's.
All at the same time, too, like, it wasn't even a worship, it just died, you know, so.
I didn't realize that there was anything that we were able to wear with, so definitely game changer. Definitely would like to see us use those sprinklers this summer.
Yeah, the end of the summer last year was so dry, a lot of trees like died, it was unbelievable, if you didn't order.
But if we can start, yeah.
There's a lot of traffic on that too, with the benches and, and the tree, a lot of people.
I think people will like that.
Absolutely, do it, go run with it, yeah.
Right, great, thank you.
Alright.
So, moving along to open to council members and department heads. So you can call out what you want to do, Mayor.
Alright, Bruce, what do you got?
Well, with the four fields, uh, we're in the contract to have, uh, my knowledge, gardens. Basically, get the field set up to start the seasons, like it's a matter of running and bunker rigs or whatever they have. I talked to a guy today, I said, why is each field getting ten, ten tons of dirt? When some are just base paths, another one's all skinned, you know, I just said, we know. You know, I, if, if we only need five tons at this spot, I'd rather have breast moved somewhere else. You got a question? Oh, I thought it was, so, uh, so that's one of the things we're, the, uh, and. We're also, you saw the, the work at the, uh, the fourth field with the concession stand. Um, I didn't realize, I thought a guy called me the other day from, uh, who originally built the concession stand, you know. Twenty, uh, I think it was twenty-five years ago, Collins, that and I got involved in getting that built, that stand, so. Uh, next thing I know, I look out there, it put inside, it needed a lot of work, I, I told the guy, main thing I, when it comes to have the floors put in to keep that. Uh, deck from coming down, and we have some broken windows, it's a little, clear, anything you need, clear with Colin, I said, you know, he's, he's the money guy, so. That, that should be done hopefully within a week.
It looks great with the.
The, uh, and then the bleachers, we bought new bleachers and hopefully might get installed within the. Baseball really starts in, in, uh, with their season, it's three weeks. Uh, so we, we moved bleachers around, you may see there's, we put, I set out on. Uh, McAdam's Way out here, in the outfield, it's right field, other, other, uh, Joe Wood Field, and we put one along. Along first base for right now, so that's, you know, once we get that up, that, that part of the project is, is done. We're working on, uh, and Skip and I and Ryan, I talked about the. Uh, putting netting along, Brian got a grant for put netting along. Brandon Lane, which is, I don't know why we don't have more cars, it will be, it's not as bad as you would think with it. Uh, but, but so anyway, we're, we're working with that and we got a price, I think this meeting, it was seventy-two thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars a pole, you know, yeah, twelve thousand dollars a pole, so we talked, I contacted a company that. From Seon that will provide us with fifty, forty foot high, uh, telephone poles. At thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen sixty-five, I think it was. So, but then I, I talked to Skip and, and Ryan about this, I said, well, and again, it's, it's another, it's a grant he has, that. Now we have to get someone to do the boarings, well, I know you probably know people do boarings, I know people do boarings, that, you know, so I probably get the. Eight foot boarin' put in, but on top of that, then we have to have somebody be able to pick the poles up and put them in. You, you, you guys. Cause for some reason I think the poles are almost forty foot, fifteen hundred pounds.
One of these associates has, it's, it's a grabber, like.
Yeah, I should say, yeah, you drop it in.
Cause they're forty foot.
Yeah.
Like, you're gonna need a.
Well, that was the other thing, cause, uh, I, I, I don't, I think I talked to Ryan about. It mean that we have the, the lift, whatever, you know, the pole, whatever, but anyway, that, that only goes up thirty feet. Well, this is gonna be forty feet high, yeah, it's, it's basically. Uh, so operation this thing, man. I know, that's what I said, so, so all these little things are happening.
If you're in light down the road, it's already up.
Yeah, it'll definitely come in, uh, way under the grant line.
What was the grant, twenty-five?
Thirty-three thousand with a, with a fifty percent match, so it's like thirty, sixty-six to the project.
Yeah, and the mass, the screening is really, really, really cheap. Really, I mean, it's maybe two thousand dollars to, to do that with, with the net. So that was, that's the other thing, and then on the, uh, the next step is that, you know, Ryan mentioned about lights. Oh, yeah, everybody heard, like, the podium got flipped lights and. Skip and I were at a meeting back in last May, and so we went to about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, okay, it's not bad. Came in seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I won't even, I'm not even gonna bring it to council, I'm, I'm not that crazy, you know. Put lights on the field, uh, so, uh, with all that aside, then we go over to the, the Field of Dreams. And, but we had, now we had the trackers, one of the other things, you and I talked today, right, with the bunker, I, I caught a bunker guy, that's coming. And the other side, everything, those things are ready to go too, the bunker rates.
The bunker, yeah, the stuff over there. The bunker rate for Legion will be here tomorrow.
Well, I know, yes, I, I told people it can be here this week, you know, so, uh, but on the other side and skip. Right, we will be talking, does anybody know who the Brooklyn Athletic Association is? No one? No, there isn't, but was it Jeff Howard?
Not for a year.
It ended with me and, uh, and, uh, Flynn, we were the last ones to run the Athletic Association.
What year was that?
It was a while ago. No, 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 no.
So, anyway, with that, uh, and when I brought that up, it turns out they have a bank account, Skip didn't know about, but. In the stand on the other side, there's a lot of stuff that says B A A, Athletic Association. And I would have thrown that out, because we don't wanna take the chance of donating helmets to some other organization. And the bats that they have over there, I guarantee all out, all illegal bats, presumably baseball stuff now. So, I wanted to move like the hot dog machine, the fry, all those things over to this stand here that they use once a while, at least the.
The board is going to school.
You know, but I wanted to. What's that, no, the school has nothing here, Matt, I, I met with them this, we, we haven't used that in years. And they have stuff that, I, that's been thrown out or cleaned down, it's. Yeah, ridiculous what that was like, so anyway, that's basically where we are with, with, uh, with all the ballfields. And I do have the same people who used the field last year. And on the other side, they, they sent the insurance, but I think I made toys, if they didn't, they didn't list Brookline as an additional score. Uh, additional insured, they send us, they sent me a copy, I said, no, I need to see Brookline's name on it, it's not individual, you know. And, uh, once they get that, and then we have, at, at this field, of course, we have Loser Catholic, Brookline Legion and, uh, Perfect Game. Perfect Games, one of his old weekends. Uh, you may hear some rumblings from Perfect Game, cause they wanted to rent the field on the other side. But if any of these, well, you're in there, you've seen, John, maybe you just, if. On Saturdays and Sundays up here in spring and summer, it's crazy. Well, they want to rent Field of Dreams, I said, no, I, I can't subject the neighborhood to all these cars coming in and out, you know, that won't happen, so. Ever hear anybody complain about that, I basically, no, I said, because I know how hectic it is.
Who is this?
Yeah, they're the biggest group in the country, like, it's all over the country to have these tournaments. So, uh, matter of fact, they, uh, I almost have them to where they'll pay for the Asher Turk entree up here.
Yeah, I say, why did we turn that down?
No, no, over on that side, because. No, no, that part, that's not close to being enough. No, no, you know what, there's eight, there's usually eight teams, four games, you know.
People coming in the same time, what a game.
Yeah, coming out, and I'm thinking, you know, there's no way people get in and out here, not much, so.
It's a whole tournament.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's every weekend, you're gonna have eight teams coming in, I said, no, we, we can't do that, you know. Because Colin and I talked before, we have to have a field for like, whether you and your daughter, somebody, if you. Where you go, if, on the weekend, if you want to use, you know, so.
Yeah, that's a good one.
No, but, so, so they've been. Not, that, they've, they've been driving me crazy, well, I've been here, figure seventy years on the fields and. And, uh, and I know what it's like, and I know what tournaments are like, so, uh, as a matter of fact, like, and I. With Field of Dreams, with Field of Dreams, I'm sorry, with the Perfect Game tournaments. They don't, they really don't adhere to any rules, so I told them, no Friday or Monday evening, cause this year I came up here. So what are you guys doing, they're playing, the school's going on, and they're holding a tournament on Friday, they said, no, you can't be here on Friday. So that, they, they, they understand that this year, you know, so, but. But as I said, if anybody hears rumblings about the Perfect Game, uh, but again, but I could make it them to run, uh, they're talking about. To contribute something to a perfect entree up there, which is. Which is probably the biggest, only expensive thing you would have on the field up there, so.
Very good, very good move, son. Uh, Stacy? Anything with the bar homes still that, that we should?
Trish?
The cleanup at the community center is going really well, Harry has come across quite a lot of stuff. So that's pretty much all been cleaned out, um, it's looking really good, I don't know if anybody's been over there before and after, it looks really good. So that's a work in progress, but we should definitely start, um. Trying to come up with like rates and that, because I think we're almost there, where we can start to run it out and.
Are we gonna create a section for people, we have like a line on of what everybody, where everybody's space is?
Well, I mean, they have their own cabinets and things like that, so, uh, we can, I, I don't know, what does everybody else, how you guys feel about that? It's pretty organized right now, except for that foyer area.
One, uh, fellow in there with all the stuff in the tables. Is he, uh, saying or leaving?
We need to discuss that, maybe you and I can have a little talk with him on Saturday. Because it's definitely an issue, it really is.
Right, we were thinking, uh, Brooklyn Trish, on that back wall, like facing Franny's house. The foot bins, just come back off the wall for, you know, stuff. Like there's.
Like so everybody could have their.
Everybody can have their own thing, and a door.
So, so you put, you, you, uh, want another wall up to the door?
Like, all the work in here, you know, they.
Not a bad idea.
They could use, uh, they could use metal stud and drywall or whatever, just something that doesn't look like, okay, now we got all these bins. And they can do, like in, when I say, when they do conventions and things, uh, metal stud, drywall. It's temporary, you know, it's taped on the floor, there's no, nothing screwed down, but it's secure, and you look at it, it looks like a house or whatever. They could do a temporary wall, four foot off that whole back wall, and each person can have their own thing, have their own lock.
Right.
Naturally teeth, but, so.
You still have plenty of room in the building to do that.
But you're only gonna take, let's say, four feet off, that's a pretty big closet, you know.
This is for the people that rent it all the time, so they can keep things there?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I did.
Because I did notice, you know, I was in there, I don't know, on a Wednesday with Harry, and then went back on a Monday. And it, it's just like a dumping ground, so we might wanna consider changing the laps because. I know people are, are not gonna be happy with me, but I think they just go in there at their leisure, and oh, I have this, I'm just gonna dump it there, I mean. There's this big giant thing in there, nobody knows where it came from, well, it wasn't there the week before, so people are just letting themselves in and. And I think that makes the stuff, I don't think that we know who has keys, but.
Well, we have to eliminate, I, well, the mayor already said, we just gotta change the keys.
A hundred percent.
Like, just change the keys, and then people can come and yell it up.
Right, and then, you know.
And we'll get twenty-five keys made, and then we'll just, they'll have to sign out the key and put a fee on.
And, and a deposit, I feel like we need to have a key deposit, and it's just the way it's gonna have to go, and do not duplicate. Because they're crazy.
Go on the key, yeah.
Is there a process?
No.
Is it a possibility to get that?
It'll be expensive.
I know.
Well, I get it from my story, I can be spending any money.
I know. No, I, I just. So that's that, so we need to have more of a little bit of a discussion on that, but then, um. The Easter egg hunt is gonna be April nineteenth, we're doing it again, the Barrow has decided to take it over again. And, um, I don't really have too many details right now, but we'll get back to you guys, just save the date.
We have a lot of stuff already.
And we have those last stuff, but, uh, yeah, other than that, we'll talk about that a little bit more next month, after the celebration committee has had an opportunity to.
Okay.
The nineteenth.
I want you to talk about Fourth of July.
Yeah.
You were complaining stuff for.
Oh, we're doing it up. No, I'm being dead serious, so, we are doing all of our stuff, we're bringing it all back. Not that we, I mean, it was COVID, I mean, there were a lot of reasons why we stopped doing these things, and I already did speak to pasture, I mean. They only took over the egg hunt last year, so that would have an egg hunt. So he's more than happy for us to resume doing it, but no, we, we definitely intend on, I intend on. Celebrating all of our holidays.
That's, I agree.
And, and on Fourth of July, so everybody save the date, that is a Barrow.
When's Fourth of July?
Sponsored thing, so as many people that can be here should be here for.
There he came out, there he is.
And next year is the, uh, two-hundred-and-fifth year. That makes a difference with like, the, this year versus next year's Fourth of July celebration, but next year is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday. And also, and also to, also to keep in mind other celebrations that are going on, um, across the way.
Two-hundred and fifty, or three?
Not only the World Cup, but there's something else. There's something else going on too, I can't remember. So. This is what I'm gonna say, on Fourth of July, is the, is gonna be one of the quarter final tournaments at the lake. So, the Fourth of July at the lake.
I think the Fourth of July.
Is going to be time for celebration over by the lake, so you might get fireworks and all of that stuff from the lake. I don't know what they're doing, it's just a little bit of fun, that stuff is set up, but again, it's just something to keep in mind, I mean, like, even financially. This year's budget, this year's budget.
It's not, sure, that's our plan.
Yeah, but there is something else going on, and people just.
Well, Fourth of July is a Friday, and typically when it falls on a Friday, we don't get as many people participating, because. They go lag and stuff like that, so I don't really know how it's gonna shake out, but we're gonna celebrate it.
That sounds great.
That will be a, that's, yeah, that's gonna be a.
I think it's automatically, right?
I don't know.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
All right, Jack.
And, uh, Trish does add on, somebody sent a comment online, it said that the exit lights aren't working, but since somebody, I see if Harry can, uh, change it.
Everett's Community Center?
What, the emergency lane?
Yeah, there's gonna be, maybe a, uh, somebody's gotta check in mic, please.
Exit light.
I know there's a time, and they. Yeah, they, they last so long, and then you gotta replace, because of battery.
Backup, yeah, we had to replace a couple in here.
Well, back to the community center, Harry is really an excellent child, I mean, so much as he's washing the walkway. With a bucket and soap, so, he's doing an amazing job, he's, he really is an asset. He starts out here and he does, he, he's a really good guy, he's a really hard worker, really hard worker.
Blue rocks all around here.
And I'm okay to put it out now, can we up his page with the, with the crossing guards are getting, and throw him on there?
Can we do that?
We do maybe stem cells, you know, is that?
Can we get a holder?
He went above and beyond, I'm sure, Mary, he told you, the pineapple that got spilled all up in the cabinet, he. Got that all cleaned up, I mean, he really, he's a hard worker, so he, he does deserve that.
Yeah, done.
One question, any fireworks?
Yeah, fireworks is last Saturday, before the Fourth of July, a week before the Fourth of July, I think, what's that, Friday?
What?
Fourth of July is on a Friday.
The week, the weekend before Saturday, Fourth of July, I mean, the fireworks.
Right.
And it'll be a little bit scaled down from last year, but, uh, so it'll still be pretty, it'll still be pointy.
He said Saturday before Fourth of July is twenty-eight.
Yeah, today's. Twenty-eight, yeah, because fireworks are the twenty.
And I think usually for fireworks, we just do like food trucks, food trucks, right, I'll talk about that, because he usually does that, and that's not a lot of things, so.
Mr. Softy and.
Yeah, I know, we were talking about the bands and, uh.
You can do all that stuff, yeah, now you have the pavilion, you can put the.
It's a good time, Dan.
You can put like, uh, somebody that's, a single person that does guitar and stuff in there and play and all, that'd be nice.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome.
Great, and that's it, and, um, how's it going with Third Street?
It's, uh, well, the, uh, the people there, the engineer's still working on it, it's up to the, uh, DOT, uh, DOT, wait to, uh, to accept the plan. Soon as accepted, we'll go out the bid probably in April, and then, uh, start to, start to do a coin some money, the, the money will be in after second reading, so. It's gonna go all the way down, it's gonna go from, uh, grounding all the way down to lake.
Yeah, I have a question, the last year I thought that, when, when Trish mentioned pavilion, and I spoke to John a little bit last year about. And I would like, I don't know how we'd go about it, but maybe the first Sat- Sunday of each month in the summer, or second. But have that, I think, is the new, but what do you want pavilion then? Bring in a winery, and just have them, you know, make it, your people just go down there from, let's say, from six to nine o'clock. You have a winery come in here, you, maybe, you and I talked about it, I think.
I love the, I, I actually had to bring it up too, for me, it's like, I'm not going to run it, I'd like. That, that's the bear, yeah, but no execution for me on that. Yeah, some things I'll do, that is.
But I was thinking if they, if you have a winery selling, selling wine down there, but have a few like, uh, barkeep with round tables. But I just, if you, if you, as, like, we, we made Liverpool such a big success, was that we owned it the same day, every, every year, everybody knew. Well, if you know it's gonna be the first Sunday of June, July, August, September, then you, you get the people turning out, because in this one, you're not gonna anybody. But the key is getting a winery event, and someone sent me to Cedar, is it Cedarville down on exit fourteen, and, uh, they said, I'll go back, you never go back. So if we had something where we could do that, I just think.
Maybe we can like shoot for every night, or something, because we don't wanna do it in July, all this.
That's why I said, like, from six to nine o'clock at night, you know, people just, they just wanna watch the sunset, they come down there, and they. You know, you can have a guy pay guitar, you know, but I know it costs money, so it's something we have to explore, but. I think what happened last year, we waited, I, I, I came when it wasn't April last year, so. Uh, by the time I would have gotten it put together, it was almost too late, because you had to, then you had to run some, Ryan, some permit up to Trent, and they have to have it.
Well, yeah, because you have the social fair permit, like, oh, yeah, but their, their responsibility to do that.
Yeah, but I mean, but they need at least thirty days to do that, yeah.
It's something that the captain, I don't know what told us yet, but when you're the chief, you have to, um, the email, or maybe he will come to myself, and the chief. And there will be, uh, we have to sign off on it, what are you gonna have?
Yeah, but that, that's what I just said, you know, six to nine, so it's not hot, you know.
Right.
It'd be interesting if somebody could run it for us, like some winery does it, and we say, we'll give you the town at this cost every single year to.
Did you have a specific winery that you wanted to deal with?
Someone said, I'm with Ryan, someone said me to Cedarville, I guess it's exit fourteen, it's in Ridgeport, I guess.
There's another one that's smaller. That there, and then there's the one that does the Jersey white, Jersey red, that kind of stuff, and they have a higher end, yeah, but, that'd be great.
And I know, like, a lot, like, Joe and I, we'll just go, we'll go down to Riverwinds, we'll grab pizza, you go down to Riverwinds and watch sunset, you know, and things like that, so. I mean, if, if someone, I'm, I'm willing to help, like, face it, you said, John, but we're, we're away.
I think for them to advertise the brand, and, and then we throw up a few bucks, and obviously help with kind of setup and that kind of stuff. Would be enough for them to wanna run it and promote it, and then we just help them.
We do very well with the fall class, when we do the tasting, the wine tasting.
Yeah, yeah, that really does well.
Who do they use for that, you know?
Oh, yeah, they're great.
They said, if, if you can reach out to them, and, and I know when I talked to, they, they were somewhat receptive, but they didn't have the time to do it at this late moment. That, uh, that basically we give it to them, they do everything, uh, uh, we can really promote it, promoting of course anything. So, uh, uh, and that's why I spoke, they said, look, I came down to you and make X amount of money, you know, once you build, once, but people realize you're doing this. Every Sunday night, you know, first, not, not every, but. Yeah, so it's, it's something.
Well, I know the large has been pleasantly surprised with what they have made at our fall class.
And you have an event dedicated to it, yeah.
Surprised, I remember our first year, they were really surprised.
Well, then, if you, you have some idea, we talked about, one, like, one Sunday a month, each, uh, uh, starting in May, June, July, you know. Uh, it wouldn't be going to September, because. Yeah, once a month, you know, and that's be the same one, but man, if you wanna talk, then let's. What, what really made me think about it was, we do find about it, but at close from Ryan's house, they should have that event. With Brian paid for all the hot dogs and stuff.
Meet the neighbors.
Yeah.
Like, the people I knew.
No, but that's what I'm saying, so, and this.
I met you before, so I was a little disappointed.
But I found it interesting, when, at Action Day, we're up there at, at all, we're doing our, that's enjoying that, it's like, I'm T. These people standing behind me have no idea I'm even on the ballot, you know, but, and so, there is a way people can meet people, I mean, so, you know, like. And, and Colin and I just talked earlier about, like, athletics in Brooklyn, if you don't have athletics in the community, you really don't get the togetherness, you know. You go up and force it, you, everybody's there, you get time to talk, but we have nothing to bring the parents out, you know, watch your kids here in Brooklyn, so. That's what I just think, it can be, and who knows, you can always correlate that into, like I said, whether you're bringing a guitar player down here, or a district. So, anyway, that's, that's an idea.
I love that idea.
But, oh, I, I forgot to say, John said he would give you the, offered stalls or benches or something there, so that's talking to you.
Whatever you need, yeah. Well, I don't have it, there's a person that was a citizen that spoke earlier that would be kinda happy to do.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, absolutely. Private sector, John, yes, all that, um, I have a few things here, um. Water stuff, Mike, are we good on, um, I know Greg's not here, I think the delivery should be within a week for the carbon.
Uh, March tenth is the delivery.
Yep, that's right, I think I had twelfth, tenth, so, um, have they kind of reached out to follow up, kind of check in, see how you're going, or they're just, it's locked?
We just, uh, so the delivery is, it's supposed, it's supposed to be the tent, that's, it's been scheduled for the tent, and a checkup's been done. They say the tent, whether or anything will happen from there, as of today, the tent. Uh, electric's almost done, a couple little nuanced things that need to be finished, nothing crazy, we have some pumps that we're working on. Or, everything should be ready.
Thank you, and I know the dissection and all that went well, could you ping them with a follow up, just to make sure that we're still locked in for the tent?
It was just done for that, we checked with, uh, with all the, um, the trades, there's just a few things to be wrapped up. We're, we're dialed in for the tent.
Great.
Now, mind you, we do have to do, we have to backwatch the system, and we have to go per the.
It'll be a while after the tent, but, you know, I know we have like a few weeks of work to make sure the water is perfect after that.
Correct.
Yeah.
There'll be some, there'll be some trial runs and things like that.
I just wanna make sure that their delivery is in, and then it's kind of turned over to us, and then we'll be.
Very good. Cal down will be on site and all that good stuff.
Awesome, um, thank you, um. I think last month we spoke about the possibility of buying those, you know, uh, a street sweeper, you know, they're eight million dollars, or we can borrow. Um, how did that go?
So I did reach out to Josie Anna from, uh, Delmar, uh, and he, he did write us up an agreement, uh, kind of like. What they would charge, their rate, what I was looking for, we had kind of went to his office, we did a little bargaining. I don't know if he came back with a firm price, but it looks like if we were to spend, from what I gathered from council last meeting. We were gonna do two hundred thousand, Westville was gonna do two hundred thousand, or I can't speak for Westville, or anything like that, but for Brooklyn. The two hundred thousand, we can get street, we can get our streets swept for like. And I don't wanna go on record that this was, because nothing's now and now, but we're looking at like thirteen years. Now, of course, the Barrow Brooklyn would not sign a thirteen year agreement, we would do maybe a three year, or a five year, or a two year, whatever agreement we worked out with. With Delmar, and that could change with personnel and pricing and equipment, stuff like that, uh, if you're asking my opinion, um. Six and one, half thousand and the other, I mean, it's, it'll free up our guys, there's always opportunity cost, as you know. Uh, it'll free up our guys to do something else in the Barrow, not to mention service, maintenance, that things are, I'm not gonna say they're finicky, but.
Two hundred thousand now for thirteen years, that was, that would be great, that two hundred thousand, thirteen years from now would be worth a lot more than this now.
Right, but I certainly don't think, I, we call our, I figure our first contract, I got into, uh, conversation with them, was like five years.
Would it be two hundred thousand for five years? I know, I shouldn't be backing down numbers right now, but you're open to the idea, and it, uh, it could work out at least.
Correct, it could be advantageous for us, but also for them as well, you know, everybody's gotta make money.
Once we get those numbers, let's see what it looks like versus.
My estimate's around fifteen grand, if we're doing it every, every week, but if we scale back and pass that, so seventy-five hundred.
You know, how often does council want it done?
They want it done once a week, they want it done twice a month, like. But we gotta know the prices first and then we'll go from there. And I just wanna give you kind of a rundown, cause when we got the new sweeper back in the day when I was a kid, I ran the thing. You can get the, you can get both sides of the town cleaned in one day. Do you really, does it really need to be all cleaned the next week? Absolutely not, not in my opinion. If I were council, I would go twice a month.
The leaf truck is different than the.
Yeah, a leaf truck's just for leaves only, a street sweeper is for street sweepers. And then in my personal opinion, I think sweeping the town twice, twice a month, the entire town twice a month is above and beyond.
Yeah, true.
And we did talk about throwing some other events in there, Fourth of July, Easter, things that, you know, special events that we need to.
So what happens if we have a really bad storm and we need to have them come out and clean some of our streets up? Because I know in the past, they have done that.
That's true. I'm sure there could be.
We just go from there, yeah. You know, they're also interested in buying our other sweeper, so that's also another bidding tactic we can have with them, like, hey. You know, I'm not sitting here, it's worth a hundred thousand dollars, but it's worth something.
Trade it in for.
They have that same model, they would just take that.
For parts.
For parts and pieces and, but also having it, it does run. Does it run well enough to keep doing the town every week? No, it doesn't, but it's something, if you need that cleanup or something, we could do that.
That's good too.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we fix that?
It's, you're, you're, at that point, it's past its lead use. But I would not, in my professional opinion, it's, I would not. That's like replacing an, an engine in a trash truck that's twenty-two years old, like there's body rot on it, there's parts you can't get anymore and there's. You know, we're already inventing pieces.
Fifteen.
Since you were a kid, is it?
I was on council, I was on council when it was. I was on council when it fought, it had to be like two thousand nine, two thousand ten, so.
I was going back with trash trucks, so that was a lot.
It makes sense.
Uh, so good one, thanks for the water and then, uh, street sweeper, um. I think one of, I think last thing I had was the, um, for the benches, I know we had to wait till it started to warm up, it definitely was not warm yesterday and it was banned today. Could we, um, could we lock down a date where we kinda get those going and then I think Christina was.
We're going glagers.
Great.
We got, we're reading water meters right now.
Okay.
Uh, we got a water path to do over at the, uh, community garden.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can definitely put on a list. Also, I do, I think I have placement, uh, some of them we need concrete pads.
Yeah.
If council's okay, like we go out for, to get a contractor to pour them pads like we did the last one. Away everything's.
Um, I would be fine with that, um, and I'd like to run that by the team, but I know we need the ones in the playground possibly kind of sooner than later.
So that's another thing, I have to call in a contractor, so there was a, I'm not gonna say a miscommunication on, on the borough's behalf. But between the contractor doing the grass and foam versus where the, where the actual line was. To the, the end, the end grade, there was a miscommunication between the contractor and then the subcontractor. So we had to pay the subcontractor, come back in, rip the semi grass up, mount the benches and then put the semi grass back. So that was already discussed when we put that in, it's gonna be an additional cost of the barrow and it's not something that can be done.
If they had a miscommunication, how does the cost hold us?
It was already, it was already done and planned and the grade was already happened, like it, it was just a thing, it, you know.
I'm in disagreement, uh, copy me on that and, uh, kinda send me the information and let's see if we can.
You know, we were told, we were told by the contractor that this was the grade. Yeah, it was a grade for the base, but it wasn't grade for top, where it ended. So we were going by the information that we were told.
Alright, let's, let's take that one offline, let's, um, you do that, let's catch up on that, you know, tomorrow and then we'll try to get, uh.
Either, either way, that all the grass has to be peeled back.
Yeah, it's easy, but let's not pay for it. Okay, let's talk about tomorrow, we'll, we'll catch up on all that. Um, benches was the last thing I had, I've seen, you know, before Congress goes, but I would like to get them moving at the, uh, park. Um, but I think that was all I had. Thanks, guys.
Alright, I obviously had Russell here, um, but that event is temporarily planned as June eighth, so it should be pretty cool if anybody has a kayak. Uh, you wanna get in down that, like up here, if it all works out, it'll be a pretty cool event. And once we, you know, like affirmative on it, we'll make people aware, um, that they can participate. Uh, we had the no parking, uh, painted down by the, by the river front, so I appreciate that, Mike did a fabulous job down there. Um, that is the last, so we're talking about, you know, development down there, it's the last possibility for somebody to park after nine P M. That used to be there, so there shouldn't be any cars down there after nine P M at all. So we know we've had a lot of problems, you know, drug related things, stuff like that, so there shouldn't be any cars down there besides we have the permanent parking. Uh, like five houses that are right there, but everything else should be gone at this point.
There are cones down there right now, did you guys put them down? Like that paint dry, or do we keep them there or?
No, I just gathered them up and put them there. It was freshly painted.
Yeah, it dries in like fifteen minutes, um, ready to ride. Yeah, I'm gonna pull, I'll pull them off.
And in the same area, um, so we got the information from the pickleball people, uh, tend to be scheduled for March twenty-fourth. Um, for the construction of the concrete down there, um, to get going on that, and if everything works out, you know, perfectly. It'll be mid-April, uh, for the construction of the fence and everything down there, so we should be ready to go by May, um, down there for the pickleball. Which has been really exciting, Fourth of July to have all that kind of stuff, um, so if that all works out.
We've got to, uh, prep for the liquor too, right, down there.
Yeah, so they're handling. Yes, that's all within the plans and they're handling.
They're, they're gonna build, I thought we've already had this discussion, they're gonna build, they're gonna get ready, we're gonna run too. It's easier for us to run to them than for them to run to us. So that's already, they'll stub up and we just, we just run it.
Okay, they put conduit or something.
Already, already done.
Yep, so that's exciting, but that'll be March twenty-fourth, it's, uh, they said like weather permitting, everything being perfect, uh, that'll be the start of that. Um, we're finally gonna tackle, which has been a long time, uh, Pershing Roads, we're finally gonna tackle the, the major safety issue. On Pershing Road, we talked about as a, as a, um, streets, I think Christine, I don't have time, but I informed you as a newer, uh, member. That we came up with a game plan, so we are gonna place in two speed bumps, um. One at the beginning of Pershing where you make that turn to completely blind side, you can't see anything coming the other way. Obviously, like other streets in town, there's no sidewalks at all, but on that street in particular, there's, there's nowhere to go. Um, so people obviously walk in the street, cars come around there and not like, you know, the speed limit's twenty-five, you can lower to whatever, but it's just. A lot, you, you can't see anything, so, and it's unique that people's fences open to the streets. Um, there, there's like, I think three properties or four properties there, their, their actual fence opens into the street. Um, so it's extremely dangerous, um, area, so we are finally gonna tackle that. So there is gonna be a speed bump at the beginning of Pershing, at the end of Pershing, there's another blind spot turning around, it'll obviously slow some of the traffic down there. Um. Yeah, we're also gonna, we talked to a couple of residents down there who are upset about. Essentially, you know, if everybody's familiar with the area, well, people kind of park in us, it's like, yeah, it's just a, this is a strip, but there's no parking. So we're, we will, we're gonna finally line that, so we wanna create parking spots, line that, people said, people park sideways and people are this way and that way. And you can't get, you can't fit cars in there and things like that, so, um, we talked about angle, yeah, so we're gonna call some angle parking. Um, that'll help some of those residents. Yeah, first gonna help us with that, so we can get, uh, some more cars in there for some of those residents that are in there. Um, so both of them will be going and then on timber, obviously we have those speed bumps are kind of wearing out at this point. Um, so in coordination with the Pershing, uh, speed bumps, we're gonna be doing the timber ones as well, replacing them. And they're gonna be the asphalt, um, speed tables. Yep, so once it's done, it's done with, we're not, you know, repairing and tear them up and snow is getting on, we have pins always, we're not dealing with that stuff. So that'll be taken care of, it, it'll be effective, um, I know, you know, we, we live with the ones outside of our house and you hear the boom boom, you know, when people go over them. It should be less of a, less of a sound because, you know, they're gonna be speed tables, so it shouldn't slow people down as well. Um, so we're getting pricing on them now to place both of them in.
That's just poured concrete.
Pour, yeah, pour asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, asphalt, yeah.
The giant you would probably go, it's a different kind of a pour, isn't it? I mean, uh, I know they had curving.
Or they just poured higher?
Yeah, poured higher, they molded it.
Yeah, speed tables is asphalt.
Yeah, it is, I thought it was, there's a different type of a mix.
You can use different materials for the, uh, like the table itself, a lot of people build crosswalks in all, you know, on concrete or paint or replat. For most parts are asphalt.
Yeah, they don't roll them, they just library.
That's cool.
Yeah, so that'll be exciting, it's nice to have a solution, um, to those huge issues, so we're gonna have both of them done.
Um, it's a better experience, it's speed table than a bump too, so I think residents.
You'll see it coming up.
Yeah, that, that was a great idea, yeah, good job.
Um, I also reached out and spoke with Barbara Zaro, she's the senior director of government for NJ Transit. Um, so I reached out to her and we saw the article, um, for the G C L that got released. Um, the CEO kinda made a comment that, I don't wanna use his words, but essentially the project's gonna move forward and. People are gonna have to kind of live with whatever comes of that, essentially, with, it seemed to be a lot of the discussion. Um, within that discussion, he had stated that they're actually only at the thirty percent planning mark of the G C L and kinda how it's gonna work out. So I reached out to NJ Transit to try to, uh, get our concerns out there. If they're only thirty percent through, I know I'm being hopeful here with government, but that they would maybe take our needs into consideration. So I talked with them about, obviously, our school kids that are crossing there every single day, you're putting high speed lines coming through every seven and a half minutes, gonna be glowing through there. Obviously concerns about our kids crossing there, um, so I addressed that with them. Um, I also addressed the fact that obviously when it floods, all west side is shut down, that's our only way out. So now you're running a train through there when it's already gridlocked and it's coming through every seven and a half minutes and people are gonna be stuck, it's gonna be, it's gonna be chaotic. Um, so I expressed my concerns, um, she was very receptive to them, but she did say like, listen, this guy, this is. Uh, Delaware Port Authority project, that if you're following the news, got pushed to NJ Transit. And she's like, we just kinda, this guy kinda got dumped into our laps, we're dealing with this thing now. Um, so she said she would speak with the engineers, she said they'd never heard an issue about Brooklyn, they did a traffic study, nothing came up about Brooklyn at all. I said, uh, probably, cause you know, we're sort of small, I'm sure it hasn't, um, but you know, it's something that I'm trying to say, I don't, I don't know how much. Leverage we have in the whole scenario, um, but I'm hoping by speaking to them early while the plans are still going, that we can have some things in our consideration. Um, obviously I proposed, you know, uh, uh, whatever, might be another overpass, I feel like we have to have a pedestrian walkway for the kids. Um, so just a couple of solutions that I proposed to them and I sent them over, if you wanna see, I sent them over a packet, uh, that they can kinda review and go at their leisure. But I'm trying to get somebody out from the G C L that represents to meet us out at a location. Um, cause I want somebody on the ground looking at what we're looking at, so we can at least do our part, we might not be able to stop the project, change the project. But I want our concerns addressed, so I'm hoping that they'll be receptive to that and maybe make something happen for us that's productive.
Colin, also to touch base with Mayor Council, I did speak to somebody from the G C L that came out to do some survey, some of their engineers in regards to the utilities. We have running under that, we do have a, a main trunk line for water, the twelve inch main. Along with a, uh, a sewer line that's twelve inch, so, I, you know, they know that that's under there. If that constant running of those trains interferes with those pipes, it's not gonna be a good thing for them nor us.
So that's another thing I can bring up.
Yeah, it's not, it's a, it's a bigger deal, so they were, they were made aware of it, so, but there's nothing, please touch base again if you can.
Alright, I know police will wanna be part of that discussion or part of that meeting when we have it, cause obviously a major public safety concern on our side, what is gonna happen with that.
Absolutely.
Um, so if you mind me inviting you to the meeting, if I get that going. Um, and then the last thing, uh, Trish and I had talked, um, which I'm really excited about, I don't know how anybody else feels about it, so. You guys let me know your opinions, um, but trying to, Bruce had talked about trying to create more of a town atmosphere and get people involved and things like that. That's, I think that's certainly one of our main goals, uh, as a council. So with March Madness coming up, um, we were discussing, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to do a Brooklyn March Madness tournament online. That's cool, we can run it through ESPN, it'll be, you know, they'll do it for us, we're not, we're not calculating anything. It'll all be automatic for us and then the celebrations committee, um, could do like a hundred dollar Lowe's gift card to the winner, you know, it's spring coming, people fixing up their asses. Um, we can have that come through the celebrations committee, do a gift card, but that definitely shapes a little bit of town atmosphere, maybe there's a rowery somewhere, who knocks off who. I think it'd be a cool, like, little kind of running thing as we, as we progress, moving on and we can run it through the celebrations committee. Um, that's something maybe, maybe we start doing kinda every year, but I thought, just be something fun.
Would be good too, I think, you know, a little updates to do with that. And I know you've got some raving sports fans in the office, right, they would just love that. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I think that'd be great, that's an awesome idea.
Alright, yeah, it'll be fun, I'm gonna limit it, I'm gonna limit the Brooklyn, Brooklyn residents.
Yeah.
The only way, if anybody comes up with a better solution, but I'm gonna have them email me to get, obviously, the sign on the pass codes, we can limit the Brooklyn. And then when we hand out the gift card at the end, they'll have to prove Brooklyn residency, they actually have the gift card at the end, so we make sure Brooklyn people are getting it. Um, but I think it'll be a good thing, another celebration for the town. That's positive and not negative.
We could layer something on as a prize, um, I do, I mean, it's local business that would, you know, kinda donate like, uh, like an evening out as well. Uh, but yeah, I, that's, that's great. Yeah, bowling alley too, you know.
Free game, you know.
Think that's all I have.
I did, I did wanna say though, with the G C L, we did as a town offer a, a meeting at the community center. We invited them and we never heard back, right, Ryan? We said, uh, yeah, station. So, uh, we had all the literature, we had a couple, actually, whatever his name was.
Charlie and Joe and.
Yeah, and, uh, they're really hammering it down in Glassboro area, down, down there. But the problem is, there's, Gloucester's got seven or nine?
Seven crossings.
Seven crossings, so. And, and you know where we, we can hear them in Gloucester.
Oh, yeah.
All that, all that silent. It doesn't work.
No, well, I did.
Coming from this way.
It's something I forgot with Barbara, but she did, uh, bring up, I asked about, um, what do they call it? Silent crossing.
Yeah, so.
I asked about the silent crossing and basically expressed that, you know, we're designated as an overburdened community, um, by the state of New Jersey. That's another stressor that they'll be putting on us, so I did ask about that and express, you know, I think, basically, we're, we're already an overburdened community. By definition by the state, that placing one more thing on us, I think they should fund that aspect for me. And she said she can't guarantee it, but what she has heard so far is all quiet zones. Will be, uh, completely funded by the G C L, will not be municipal led at all. Um, but she, the big buck came in where federal government has to give designation or approve that. Cause it's federal, it's federal. Yeah, so they said.
Against their federal law, but that was one of the big things Charlie said before, it was against federal law, even though they said they're gonna fix it for us. But note that the federal law states it's our responsibility.
Yeah, so they said.
You want something well written?
Yeah, yeah, so they're gonna fund it supposedly, but it's cool. They need federal approval for that, so I don't know how it's gonna go.
With how bad they, they want it, I, I wonder if they say, okay, flooding's a thing, let's fix that and then we can. I, I would love that ask.
I tried that, I had a whole, little draw up or upside down. Um, my, the response to that was, uh, the flooding is, you know, it's not in the scope of the project, it's out of, out of the scope of the project. She said if, if that area flooded at the, whatever, then it would be part of the project, but since that immediate area is not affected by flooding. In terms like the round road, that it wouldn't be, it'd be out of the scope of the project.
Sure. One of my municipalities, Whippery Huts, is obviously part of the G C L. So I, I have a little knowledge with respect to Red Rat, I know they held informational town health seminars. Um, I would hope that New Jersey Transit, now that it's within their ballot, can offer the same opportunity. So if you could, have your contact at New Jersey Transit, just ensure that you are informed of any upcoming publicly official seminars. Cause at some point, I think it's critical that your concerns in Brooklyn are related to the engineers and New Jersey Transit.
Yeah.
That was another question, whether they were using different engineering plans for this next phase in New Jersey Transit.
That's what seemed to be the, it, it seemed to be, they've been drawn up to the thirty percent mark by the R P A and it's being transferred over. And now their engineers are reviewing all the plans, so this is like the perfect time for us to get in that conversation.
And most likely that thirty percent is probably ten or fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, true.
If there's a new, there's a new. Whoever took over the project, I.
She did say the traffic study was done and it was completely clear and Brooklyn was not on the radar of anything traffic, we know it's not the case.
But that doesn't discount the fact that we have concerns that.
Yes. Yes.
Should actually be addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I send you whatever I get from that?
Absolutely. Alright. Uh, Mike, you guys have anything?
I got a few things. Mayor Grassroom Council just, uh, we're just like, guys know police department, morale's high, training. Uh, ongoing training, bias awareness, some guys graduated from every truck enforcement. Uh, mandatory training coming up with defensive tactics. As far as equipment goes, we just qualified with Ranger with new blocks. Hall of Sunlight is probably the best qualification course I've seen here in the last twelve years. Uh, two new MBTs coming with the uh E-ticket. Uh, four candidates just took the sergeant's test, results should be out in October.
Could you rewind back, what's an MBT? What was that last name you said?
MBT, uh, mobile data, mobile data terminal, uh, two new computers for cruisers.
Cool.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm the last one to go, except for my gear. Um, Sergeant's test, four candidates, results should be on October. New hire, um, closing date for that's in March seventh, we have a couple of applications we're going through, start backgrounds. Uh, we did implement a new policy to address the um concerns with the parking and checking the parks. So there is a new policy in place for our offices. For accountability for getting down to the waterfront, addressing those parking violations, if you see something, please call us.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, new policy software, taking our um, our policies that are handwritten and uh putting them in a computer system, state of the art. Uh, let's see here, transition to uh the chief's position is going well. I have a new orientation for OICL today. I have an orientation coming up next week. Uh, we're getting quotes for uh new PTZ cameras for the pickleball court. And for the park, something we can zoom in and really see what's going on. Uh, so I'll keep you updated with quotes for those. Um, Detective Nicholas was uh selected for an award, she, she won the two thousand twenty-four. Woman Law Enforcement Community Innovation Award, uh, that's March twelfth up in Freehold.
That's great.
And uh, that's all I have, other than the uh, the water cooler, Mike's gonna take credit for, out here you got some blocked water. We spearheaded that project and we have a new water cooler.
Great job.
Two clicks on Amazon?
And likewise, Jake.
I do too. I have a, I have a, I have two good ones on you for real quick. Um, you know, first one is uh probably about six months ago or so. I don't know if you were in the meeting, but I'll give you the, the crux. Um, um. Days in, Motel Six, remember that? Remember that? I would have gotten there eventually after I had gone down many more hotel chains. Um. We had spoke to them about six months ago, they sat right over here, um, the ownership group. And there was an absurd amount of calls. It was really, I wouldn't say a blight, but it was one of those things where it was taking more officer time. I think it was like one point four calls per day for like a year, you know? Um, you don't have to have the numbers on hand, but I'd like to have a review of when we spoke to them with the things that they said that they would be doing. And then where they are now. If you can possibly have this for the upcoming meeting that we have, not the work session. I would like to hear those numbers. Second, um, how are you settling into the position? Is everything going well?
Good, yeah, transitions are going well.
You're doing great.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, can you have that first one for me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm good.
You know, you got new uh blocks, you said?
Yes, sir.
Red, red dot?
Red dot sites.
Nice. Uh. I know that. Right, you know? Uh. John, do you have anything?
I don't, I don't, do not have anything this evening.
I'm gonna have something for you next week, next uh. Mike, you got anything?
Good, couple things. Uh, we have a, a water shutdown going out on uh Route one thirty uh next Tuesday. We make a, replace a fire, I reckon, do a six by six uh tie-in for the new manufacturing.
Route one thirty?
What's that?
Route one thirty?
Yeah, Route one thirty, uh, northbound. For the marijuana, the marijuana manufacturing facility.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, Weavers, uh, delivery of gas material, everything called points, we, we spoke about before. Uh, I got permission for the, the concrete pads, benches around, they're gonna get ready to get assembled, work some winter bleachers as well. Uh, new gas meter installed over the community center. Uh, we fixed the water main break behind the diner, uh. Along with making some corrections to our storm drain, we found some new stuff there. Uh, water line shutdown, the recory also we dug it up. In lieu of what might be going, just shut the water, there's no need for water to be a head going anywhere. So we dug it up at the main and we completely shut it off. There was a break in that building. The record.
Shut. You cut it off, you said?
Completely, yeah, there's no more water in that building at all.
Which building, I'm sorry?
The record.
Okay.
There was an inch and a half line that was, was broken inside that building and our four feet of water in a crawl space, not to mention. All out the back of the building. Um. New commercial code, some new, a few commercial code uh enforcement issues have been resolved from last month, but everything is uh, everything's going good.
Can you tell me what's going on in the circle with trap rock and how uh?
Can't answer that, I put a call out to.
Ridiculous.
Well, I, I put a call, I put a call out to uh Ryan Agostini, he's the, the PM that I stay close to. For him not to get back to me today, he must, something must be wrong. He will call me tomorrow morning if he does.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a hookup where what they're doing in the diner parking lot is where it's headed.
No. No, there's no, there's no storm drains in that circle.
Not in it, but it looks like running rate.
Yeah, but it's not, it has nothing, it, it will not, it terminates at, in the parking lot.
It's a dead main, is it a dead end main?
What are you talking?
You say terminate, when terminate?
Storm sewer, you're talking about storm sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it goes out to the creek, but our, the, the scope of our project.
Right.
Is within the limits of the, the, the parking area.
I was just wondering if they're related, with, with whatever.
Not at all, not a zero relation whatsoever.
Okay.
They're doing, they're moving a lot of telephone poles and wires and things like that.
Well, you got, you know, tons of trap rocks.
We got big, they got big excavation equipment.
I'm saying it, cause it looks like they're gonna be doing some digging.
Nah, it's gonna be digging, they're setting, they're setting holes. So Ryan Agostini will call tomorrow. I'll send that, I'll send that an email.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright. Uh, Ryan, you want to go or you wanna go with me?
I'll go with you.
I just got a, I got a few things, uh. Mike, uh, that Conex box or that box down at the uh. Can we turn that so we can get in and out of that thing?
I was told to put it that way. I mean.
Okay, I'm gonna say, I'm saying, can we have that turned?
No, I can do whatever you want with it, yeah, that's not a problem. I was, I, yeah, whatever you want, just let me know.
It just makes no sense, we're in and backing out, this way we can win it now. It's got two floors on it, let's utilize it.
Yep, you tell me where you want it and I'll get it put that way.
Okay, our concern is what, taking up multiple parking spots.
Correct.
A lot of guys are on ways for not taking up three or four spots.
But what, if you wanna turn sideways, probably gonna eat up four parking spots.
No, it's not gonna eat up four, but I'll tell you what, it'll eat up two.
Yeah, whatever you want, you can comment.
But it makes sense, it just makes sense. I haven't seen too many cars parked down there.
Well, I bought it so you could enter an exit and then we.
Right.
Turned it and put it up against the A. You, you tell me where you want it, just get a hold of me, I don't know.
You get tight to that first spot and then turn it, that's also.
If we can meet on site for you, show me where you want it. Perfect.
Yes, the problem with, Mike's saying. You wanna be able to come out both sides, you're gonna have to at least take it before it's far from each end of it too. You could remember, you can, you can use. Yes, so like that five spots. But it, there's, I've never seen that lot before yet.
No, I haven't, I haven't.
That's another reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, cause you just, you can get with me, you're showing me exactly where you want it. I'm not trying to be a guide, but just.
I wanna be able to. If there's something that I need to get here or if it's something in there, they need to get in here. Yeah, that's all, just so that you can get in and get out, we utilize the two doors that we bought.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but on the corner, like we keep, we keep asshole and stuff on the one corner.
Okay, you know, you know better than me, slide it up away from the corner, remove the gas, well, I know it's a, a lay down spot for. Looks terrible, but uh, you know, it's a lay down. Alright, um. Ryan, anything on um. Uh, cybersecurity, I, I, what do you mean, I, you, you were getting, is there any RPs?
Yes, yeah, the RPs were already done, the lowest quote by far was Jay Hart, so we're staying with them.
Okay, because I was, uh.
I mean, it was, it was ten thousand dollars more for either one of the other ones, I'm not paying that.
It's uh, is there room for another quote or, or not?
We had three quotes.
Oh, you had three?
Yeah, we had three.
Okay. Alright, we'll forget that idea. Let's see, uh. Um. I got the, uh, you got the victory garden, uh, moving ahead. Uh, I don't know if you've noticed. Um, nobody really know, knows about what's going on there, but. Uh, they did start, uh, if you go down, back behind the, if you're not familiar with it, behind the community center. They're putting a base down and they're gonna put a screening in there so you can walk. And they're gonna be built up, this was a grant, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um. So it's all covered, uh. That way with the grant, uh, but they're, they started today actually and they, they've got a. A four inch, four by four base throughout that whole area. That they're gonna put a screening in so you can walk and then they're gonna have built up. Um, what would you call them?
Beds.
Beds, uh, several. And I just got a, a drawing on that today. On that, and we'll put that out there so we can see what the heck's going on there. Um, and I think next week, Mike, they're, they're talking about, I don't know, twenty tons of screen, something like that and, and, and soil coming. Will probably go in. The parking lot of uh the community center, so if there's any. Uh, we gotta coordinate that is what I'm saying. Uh. They're gonna be laying down soil and screens probably delivered and then truck everything in.
Cause they're particular spot like.
I, I'm just saying it's gonna come in, I don't know where, uh, but we do have quite a bit of people used at community center, obviously, right? And uh, so we wouldn't just, I don't know. I'm gonna notify, actually it's called, they're called, uh, you know the name, right?
I don't know, it'll stop in my head now.
Uh, Community Garden, the, uh, Community Gardens or whatever it is, uh, I have their phone number. I'll give you your number, coordinate, just in case people park there or anything. Um, the building, the. The uh Legion Field really looks really nice. I know we got work going on the inside too, Rick. Um, and Bruce talked about poles, we've been looking into telephone poles. Uh. So Bogie is actually looking into that and he has uh the associate that can set up.
That's, that's a big thing.
Yeah. Um. Uh, one other question I had, what was it? The uh. I guess that's it, I know I'm missing something more than. Uh. Bear with me. Cause we probably touched on it. Uh, oh. We got pricing for speed bumps, did you get the estimate?
Mm-hmm.
Can we move ahead with that?
Definitely, if you're gonna go with the, the Bogie or the other one.
What would you think? I, I would take everybody with the Bogie, yes, because it's half the price.
Well, you got two quotes, so you can, it's under the threshold, so whenever you pick, you pick. I, the money, I can use the money for wherever until I get the capital security, if it's done before.
Well.
The meeting, which it's not gonna be, so.
Well, here's the thing, no, uh, thing about Blacktop is fifteenth, I think, is the kickoff where they stopped charging them for the water or whatever. It's a price increase and that's like kickoff for all Blacktop, the fifteenth of March. And now they're, he's gonna be busy, I know it's done, it's. Uh. But I just wanted to, to know, I was gonna talk with Colin and I figured we, we're in this work session, we can, if you can put it together. Yes. We got pricing and we also did this, and you know, and I.
Different ones, yeah.
You know, for your.
That one too. That's nothing to worry about until.
No, I know.
You have the property done.
Right, okay, but uh, yeah, we'll, we'll do that, we'll go with them, I guess. Alright, so I guess that's it, um. One other quick question, the uh, next to my property, the record you brought from Colin's home is a lot. And it's one oh nine nineteen. And. So, someone mentioned something to me, so I looked it up and it said, there's an owner on that.
There's a what, owner on it?
Yeah, I don't know, I think.
Been the next to you or across from you?
Next to me.
Yeah, I know, I'm aware of that, yes. Someone has all those things going on inside.
Yeah, but that, somebody owns that.
Correct, and it's been leaning on it for many years.
We've been maintaining this for twenty years.
Yep, and leaned it for twenty years.
Okay, what are we doing?
We stopped cutting it, we were like, it's pointless, cause no one's gonna ever pay it.
We haven't stopped cutting, these guys can con- constantly cut.
You cut it again?
Yeah.
The river, the river's coming in now now. Literally, it's a quarter of the size it used to be when I started cutting grass, so. It's literally becoming wetlands. It's gotten wetlands now, it's just taken over.
Okay.
But we can't even cut into that, cause it's like, stopping wetting.
We cut that.
Oh yeah, still cut it, it's remaining there.
For twenty years we've been doing it.
Yeah.
Uh, what are we doing about it?
What do you, what do you mean, what are you doing about it?
We're just gonna keep paying, so we're gonna try to.
The, the owner's not anywhere around, like, we can either propose on it and just end it and then we're still gonna maintain, it's gonna be the same thing. We're still gonna be cutting it. If we, if we, if we propose on it, we cut it. If we don't propose on it, we cut it. It's not like it's gonna change anything.
Oh, I'm, I'm saying, it's, the, the addition for us to cut it, okay, but.
We're not leaning it anymore like we were, like back in the beginning of like, the early two thousand. Yeah, we, we used to write up a work order every single time we cut that manpower, what's used, what's up, blah, blah, blah. It, but it's become. Like if, if the property was worth twenty thousand dollars, like the lease would be sixty thousand and nobody, like you said, nobody's ever gonna pay the lease. And we're still gonna cut it, so.
Okay, and I, I, I think we either take it, take it or take it. I mean, if there's a name there and, and a person that owns it, lawyer.
Then you just propose on it. I mean, but then it costs money to propose on it for something that's worth. Assessment wise, a hundred dollars in the way, a salary. And then we, we're still maintaining it, is what he's trying to say. So if we go through the process of taking it over, we spent three thousand dollars on a lawyer. And, and still cut it, opposed to not leaning it anymore, still cut.
Is there a hassle?
No, just completely empty.
Piece of property that we maintain. Yeah, and. Alright, that might've been a stupid question, but I understand.
No, it's not a stupid question, it's just a, exactly what's going on with it.
When you look at it and, and there's a value.
Uh, well, we lowered the value, uh, the assessment lowered the value years ago to one hundred dollars just so. It's not considered a problem on our taxes, like it's not a blade on our taxes.
I think it's coming up, it's coming up monthly, we had like three hundred some dollars or something like that.
It was, but we don't do it anymore.
Well, then you gotta update your uh website and because it says you're still, it's still current, basically.
No, no, it's, it's probably interest, it keeps changing. It's not, it's not like, we're not putting three hundred dollars a cut, each cut on.
No, I, I know that, no.
No, I mean, I'm saying, it's probably entry that keeps going up and up and up.
Okay.
Not, it, it has over a hundred thousand dollars of venture loss, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm not.
Alright, that, that just seems weird to me, I don't know.
Why can't we just, you know, take it? You can propose on it, I'm just saying, we just, I'm just not trying to. What's the worst that can happen?
I mean, is it?
Nothing, you just spend money. Is it a negative liability? If something trips and falls in that little square inch? That makes sense. So.
So it is a liability.
What would you have to do?
For any property, I suppose. Yeah, so, oh, if we own it, I see what you're on there.
If you foreclose it, you now become.
That's why we never took the ownership of the property, no flower property with the, with the sled, everybody sled down and we're like, we're not taking that. We don't wanna have any problem with people getting hurt, flooding down that hill.
You know, uh, the, the other thing I wanted to tell you, that uh, on Lake Drive. Around Fifth Street, there is a uh, a lot that we, is, again.
We own it and I don't know, and we don't cut it.
But you know what's on there?
What's on there?
Turkeys?
Turkeys?
Garages.
But I don't know who, it's not, it shows up, it's, no one owns it. It's a weird thing. I I still don't know, if you look it on Google map, it's empty. It's just this little split land and we don't. We don't even know how to maintain. That's one of the, that's one of the issues I have. No, I'm joking, it's been like this for years.
We are dialed in, they are.
I'm dialing, I know that people.
That's wild.
There aren't the one I just saw, now, I'm saying, I don't know if they're new or whatever, but.
I'll send somebody out there to look at that.
I guess that's a situation like that, you know, you get an encouragement deal, right? Encouraged on it.
And twenty five years they own it, that's a long time for a property, yeah.
Yeah. When it's all, it's all like at the small.
Sixty?
Sixty years.
Yeah, you have to put a baby turtle on it, brother.
Man, real quick, the the touch base on that property?
Yeah.
The the people that own that rancher, own that property. Are you?
Does not show up on the tax.
I went over there, I, so we did.
I said they own it.
I, I did some research with Scott, uh, Scott from.
I understand that, when Scott brought it back, it still said it, the buyer of the property owns it. On an assessment. And the deed, I have a deed on it.
Okay.
There's nothing like, how did the deed get taken care of?
I'm telling you, Scott date, Scott, the 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 rancher on the right owns like, let's just say eighty percent of that lot. The person on the left owns like twenty percent. I'm just telling you what Scott's not.
They're not getting billed any taxes right now because it said owned by the buyer of the property and it had the deed restriction on it.
I think we should look into that, cause maybe uh we could get the tax money from.
Hold on, that was what, then, yeah, you go back ten years?
It just had to put a deed on either side of the.
Right.
See if that's not included in.
But how do they get signed off if we have a deed here?
We probably can't, you know.
I don't understand, they can't just take it over.
This thing, this thing, even the JFK, that.
I mean, will it be?
Is it a buildable lot, is it? Is it a buildable lot though? Is that an active?
Yeah, it needs to sign, you can probably build on it.
I know, guy just talked the other day, Nicky Slair, he's on Little Third Street. No, but no, but I mean, it's a buildable lot.
I mean, it's got a lot of trees on it, but like, it's still buildable.
Sounds like a stupid conversation.
It's not a big deal, it's just like, I'm just saying, it's a small little thing that.
This is wild.
Yeah, and it's all, there's all properties along uh, right next to virtue, all those lots, they're owned by people.
Really?
Yes, even though it's in order, all owned by them. We're gonna be here all day, I can tell you all kinds.
Brian, we're gonna straighten this town out.
Okay, whatever you want to.
We're gonna straighten this.
One weird parcel at a time.
Big cracks, big cracks.
Every town has.
Geysers, and I'm telling it. Fisher, is that that other Fisher?
One, one last thing, I, from talking to Mike, where I moved these bleachers, is there any way you can find it, get across the concrete underneath them, make it a little easier?
With a whole pad?
Yeah, yeah, pad, yeah.
That thousands.
Oh, okay.
I would say probably set a gram.
For those, the the.
Concrete's crazy, man.
Yeah.
No, it's 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 gonna be thirteen by eight. Each pad. I mean, this is.
Okay, three thousand dollars.
Uh, no, that's.
It's gonna be six, it's still gonna be six inches based on the fact.
That's how I support you.
If you're lined back numbers up.
Yeah, I, I.
It is.
Insane.
Okay, well, I just eat the fingers, go make it easier.
I, as you, if Mayor Council wants me to entertain, put, I can, I'll pull, I can pull.
I can get quotes on that, no problem, no problem.
So, get, you want me to get quotes or not?
The money got broken.
Well, I I didn't, because.
Did you concrete it delays in two more weeks, three more weeks?
What's that?
It's gonna delay a couple more weeks if you do, if you do do the concrete, just letting you know.
Yeah, well, I don't know how.
I was trying to get this done.
No, no, this isn't the the new bleachers, it's where you just move the the old bleachers too. They've moved one, one right here in Ray Field now, and it's all rest.
Oh, so you want pads for, the two old ones that we moved, but instead of new, because.
Now, the new one.
Instead of new ones, it's, it's supposed to be on concrete. Second of all, with all the root damages with the old asphalt.
Yeah.
There's a chances when we set that new bleachers, that they're gonna be wobbly.
Yeah.
And that we'll have to shim them, so.
Yeah, the one, the.
They're supposed to be lagged to the ground.
In the third base side, should be, there's no roots in stuff on the base side. Yeah, so that that is, okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, you you want me to get quotes for the two pads? Yeah, I mean, you get the quotes, yeah, I mean, that can't hurt anything.
I'm done, go ahead.
You're done?
I'm done.
All right, um, we got the two thousand twenty uh four, twenty five recreational grant for twenty five thousand dollars for. Um, improvements at the Legion Field, which we're gonna blow through with uh concrete. Um, the uh, also, we have um. We have emergency appropriation, we're gonna have to do, um. Hard to explain this thing. We have an issue, neither, it does not affect any treatment or, uh, right now, and it does not affect your water, it does not do anything, I'm saying it out loud now. But there is an issue in the water plant that they needed to, uh, where the softener tank is, uh, with an ion exchange and stuff. It needs to be replaced. It's gonna be anywhere from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace this thing. On top of what we just upgraded outside, this is something on the other part of the treatment before we get to the other side. So. To do this, uh, if we went emergency, if we went the emergency way, we would have to come in and come in on a budget, which we don't have enough surplus to be able to handle this at all. So we can't do an emergency. So what we can do is do it in the capital, go out for another capital note for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, in water. But what we'll do is, to keep costs down, we could actually buy the uh, the equipment outside of bidding. Which will keep the cost down, because I don't have to use state contract and go out and get quotes, because there, in in local public uh public contract law, there is a uh exception for water. Uh, things that we used uh for the gas filtration in Westville, that you can buy out of it. Uh, by outside of the, of of the bidding, and just bid only the working of the uh. Bid the actual construction of it, you have to bid that part. So, we're gonna buy it outside, so we can save money and save us twenty percent. But it can't just, the contractor can't up to twenty percent on the uh, whatever they bought to buy it from, whoever they buy the tank from. So, we're gonna buy it outside and then have somebody build it. So we could probably keep the cost to around one fifty, one sixty, I'm thinking estimating. Uh, based on the quotes we got, the lowest quote was like ninety something thousand dollars.
Ninety seven thousand, one thirteen and one thirty seven.
Yeah, so, um, and then.
Do you want me to try and touch base on this real quick?
Yeah, you can.
So, in our work, in our water treatment facility, we have three filters, green sand filters, and we have one media filter uh for our softener. That softens the water, it's like a fine polishing. We have to have a water softener. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, when we originally did the water plant upgrade, we replaced the Zeolite, which is the uh ion exchange resin that's inside that softener. When I popped the hatch, I immediately called our engineer and everybody let them know that we needed to replace this, this vessel. It just didn't have the money. Uh, within the last. Nine months, we've had to put in patches, maybe twelve by fifteen, like well, well cut into it and actually welded. It's getting to the point now where we walk in in the morning and there are pinholes, like, we just had the last repair done by Bellmark, thank God they, they, they helped us out loading this. But you can cut this tank open when exactly.
Yeah. We just realized this, so.
Yeah, well, there's no way to tell, there's no way, you can't see inside the tank.
Yeah.
Like, the tank all of a sudden just catastrophically failed.
So it's, it's.
So it's made aware to our engineering department that this tank was not in good shape when we put the Zeolite in, but I don't, I, I, I can't. Can't replace it, there's not the money.
So we have.
And now it's come to this, this year, it's, it's literally a a pressurized vessel you walk into and it's, there's blooming water outside.
Major water problem, right? We, we, we got. We got involved in this, we put all this stuff up and now at the tenth.
Well, there's, there was no way, there's no way to proceed this. There's no way to proceed. Like, if you can't see, if not because lack of inspection or anything like that, the the, the vessel literally just had a catastrophic failure. Just like that, I couldn't.
When did that happen?
A month, a month ago, we've been working on this. No, but we welded it up, okay, we'll take a weld, you know, no big deal, maybe it was just this one spot, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, six more weld done.
And it's not gonna be good.
And now we got about a hundred and fifty thousand, we tuned it up, whatever it's gonna cost.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It's just, yeah.
And there's no, there's no, there's no way to proceed this happening. It literally just walked in one day and has a giant hole.
Well, I can look at that big blue tank out there, it looks like that's gonna be catastrophically fail soon.
Well, we have a price on that, we're just waiting to grant it.
I'm just saying, you know, uh. I mean, I can't do anything about it, I. It's just terrible news right now, I'm like, terrible. So, I don't know, you gotta do the magic, I guess, I don't know.
Well, that's the cheapest way to get around the um, the bid law to to not exceed, like, you know, the the, the contractor upcharging and all that stuff for doing all the work. So that's why we bid it separately, we save money, we save a fortune in Westville going it this way. Um, so, I think this is the right way to go. I have no choi-, we have no choice, it's still gonna take twenty four weeks to get the tank in anyway. So, it's not gonna be something that we can operate away.
Does this affect our?
No, it's not gonna affect anything we're doing moving forward right this second. It could if something else happens, yes, but right now, we're good, we're we're moving forward with everything else.
I think before we do anything, I think we should, and I'm just saying this, I think we should uh. Take a look at everything we got in there. And do a survey and make sure this don't happen a month from now with something else.
Well, so, all four vessels were opened in two thousand eighteen and inspected. The three green sand filters were okay. The, I placed a phone call uh to our engineering department, letting them know that that vessel, the softener vessel needed to be placed, replaced immediately. It wasn't. It's been made aware.
What are you saying, since eighteen? Since eighteen years?
Since two thousand eighteen, when I looked inside the vessel, I told them in my professional opinion that that needed to be repaired. They didn't look at it, I don't know what they did with it.
They booed that.
The engineers. Engineers. Close it, put the Zeolite back in there, we don't have money for it right now, we'll deal with it later. It went all this time, no failure, everything was fine, which, hey, listen, you know, things look a little bit percolated, that's. There's nothing wrong with that, or it's saltwater, but in line, come in one day and it's, it's got holes in it, so.
Like I said, I think we, we need a survey of of our, everything in.
I got, I got a guy.
Get the guy, I don't know. I want, I wanna report on that, like, we can't, like, this is the eleventh hour and boom, now we're.
I, I, yeah, it's, it.
I understand, okay. I just wanna make sure ain't something else in there that's gonna go. This place is a hundred years old. Everything's a hundred years old.
So, our, our, the the three other vessels that are in there, and just letting you know, we can hire the guy to do this, this thing. Three other vessels were replaced in there, one, two, three, five, and ninety percent of the valves were replaced in there, so, and and sixty percent of the pipe. So for something else to occur is within our scope of work besides this vessel, that's it. There's not, for us, that, like, I'm telling you right now that all three vessels are fine, all the green sand vessels, the piping's fine, the valves are fine. Anything besides that vessel is well within the municipality's scope of work to do. Like valves on site, we can put them in days worth of work.
I know what I'm saying, let's, let's take a deep look at what we have and.
I'll call a guy.
You want, that's all. Before we have to spend, you know, another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whatever. That's all, I don't know, Brian?
Uh, next thing is, um, so I'll I'll probably put the sum together after I get the major quotes and get estimates, I'll have another bond ordinance to. Put together for it and uh get it done. So, but the only good thing is, if we do get the Solvay money. This will never hit the taxpayer, we can pay it off with that money, so.
How heavy is that if?
Hmm?
How heavy is that if? Is it like a lot?
We're gonna get money from Solvay, the Solvay estimate. Like, I I would say, within a year or so, we'll, we'll have that money.
Really?
Yeah. They're, they're, they're already reaching out to us to uh, to meet, so.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
And they're supposed to.
It's a plot twist after that.
It dropped you, dropped you hard, man. Come on, you're gonna have a heart attack. All right, okay. Ryan, you, would you have anything to say? I mean, am I speaking out of, out of term here or whatever? I mean, uh.
No, the only thing I have is for the uh regular meeting, I'll have an update on the new development.
Okay, I got you.
I'm not done here, so we got all more.
No, I'm, I was, what I meant was. This situation I had. Yeah, I'll, I'll touch base with Ryan about this, the section.
Okay.
Because typically, we have to be good at one property.
Okay, I got it.
Then, so somebody asked you online, why do we wait to six years?
Wait, we have that, man? We have the.
Uh, yeah, Colin, we said. Um, all right, the next thing is, we have uh. The, the budget, went through the budget, uh, we have no money, as always, like I said, and uh. Right now, with the, using everything around, it's going up four cents, which is not, which is less than last couple of years, last couple of years was over ten cents. So it's basically forty one dollars per household for a hundred, for a hundred thousand dollars. So if your house is worth two hundred grand, like assessment wise, your house tax will go up eighty, two dollars. Um, estimated with the school and everything, it's gonna be, uh, it will be about sixty five hours for a household for a hundred thousand. With the school, um, and the county taxes altogether. That's what it's looking like right, as of right now, but that could change, but for the municipality. It's four cents, which is way less than the last couple of years of uh doing that, and it should, and it will. If all things equal, with the, with the new businesses coming in and if they're completed by the October. Uh, first, like, at least a bit, the one building will be at, at the economist's place, and the second building is, that would actually help us on the backend of it. We could probably have a good year next year to try to keep it flat and not go crazy on the raising of the taxes next year, well, it's not a crazy increase anyway, but. It is an increase, let alone that. Um, if you wanna sit down, uh, the council, the finance committee, wanna sit down. Prior to the next council meeting to go over it and see if there's anything they wanted to change.
Please.
Um, just let me know what dates you wanna do before the council meeting, you only got a week and a half. Um, the, you know, to uh, to go over it, but uh, and if you, if I don't like it, then we can always move it to April, but I'd like to try to get it up and get it into the thing.
Yeah, so we, we have like, uh, Christine on that, uh, so it's, that's not gonna work out. We, uh, nobody else.
Maybe you can just.
Talk about that, and you, you only have. Uh, how many days to the next meeting?
Only like fifteen, uh, like thirteen days to the next meeting, because you, you, you meet on the seventeenth.
All right, uh, Colin, uh.
Yeah, we got it.
Figure out, who else is on the, first? You haven't, you, Stacy or anyone?
No, Christina's.
Well, all right, we're gonna talk, we'll figure out, we can get somebody else in there. Before the meeting and then make sure we know what we're doing.
All right, and then, um, we have uh. Two other things, it's the uh, they wanted to give up an update on the roadway, they were fined by the um, the expect, uh, the uh. Our construction official, who are following a permitting process during the process of getting uh. An engineer out there to do the scope of work of opening up the, the patches they put in on the concrete to see if, like, the building is structurally sound. Um, so, that, there's still a long process of that. Happening and and once we determine age, uh, once we get determination from the engineer, we'll have a better understanding of where. They're at and how much money they're gonna have to pay to, to, to fix it and what's gonna go on with that uh facility. So that, on the other side of that same concept, when I, when I'm meeting.
Yeah.
I just wanted to re- reiterate that.
They, um, is there, um. Is there appetite from them to continue going? This is one of the things they're incredibly passionate about doing or?
Oh, they're, they're, they wanna, they wanna get a fix, because we're bothering the heck out of them and they're now being fined.
Okay.
By not following the, uh, because they, they patched up holes without getting a permit, and when they're wide open and they, they actually put concrete over things you can't see inside now, so they have to. Take it all off and the engineer has to go through it, because we, they, we, because the construction official orders were in, um, a building official ordered for the uh. The permits to get put in for the structural looking at it, but it never did that. They kinda like hired somebody to kinda almost cover it up a little bit. So we're trying to get somebody out there to make sure that it's structurally sound, there could be water damage, you know, the concrete beams. The laggy, laggies don't add, all that stuff, yeah, and 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 the uh building inspector wing, they're both a part of the whole process, yes.
Very good.
Um, and then, so, also, I don't know if this needs a resolution, that's why I said, that's what I talked about earlier about putting resolution. Uh, we need to open up the uh, I would like to open up the lease contract. Um, for two addendums to put inside of it. One is to remove the uh, the captain salary in it, because the captain should have, should never have been in that contract and should be a. Administrative um, contract separate. Um, so, we would like to move that, and at the same time, it's putting in, and putting in a, an academy rate. Prior to getting hired full time. Like, they'll be paid while they're going into academy, but not get paid that year one step, or maybe put an academy rate like five thousand dollars less. While they're in the academy and they jump up to the first step of fifty thousand dollars, where you're gonna get out or something like that. Um, so I, I suggest that we need to open up the contract, I think we had need a resolution for that.
Right.
The one contract. So, um, I, I would highly recommend that we open that up for the, that discussion.
Is that?
They, they, they did submit the paper, like, they submitted to us to open it up for that reason.
Is the health benefits being?
That's the next thing I have to say, you got nothing to do with that contract, there's not any contract. So, um, so that's the two addendums that they wanna change inside their own contract, and nothing changes in the contract for the next year or so. Uh, that they have, it was as good for another few years.
Uh, twenty six.
Twenty six, so it's another year and a half. So, it just, we'll just take the captain out and then it'll remove it, so that only the highest ranking ones that I would be the sergeant. And then, um. And then there'll be a separate contract for captain and chief or whatever like that, and then. The uh, and then adding in, and adding rate will kinda keep the cost down for us and putting in new officers, save you a couple thousand dollars, but that's just an idea that we had.
For the first part, um, is it chief is separate now, but captain was lumped in with everybody else?
Yeah, it should never have been in there, and I, I suggested to you when we were going in negotiations, not to do that, because. Yeah, it should never have been in there, and I I suggested to you when we were doing the negotiations not to do that, because I've everything I've ever seen in any town is captain had their own contract, or it's an admin position, so like you keep all the the working road sergeants and stuff, that'd be something, Ryan.
Do you concur?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so. And then the other piece was basically they would make less than a first year officer while they're going through the academy. We pay them would be forty five thousand dollars to go to school and pass the whole time?
Yeah, they'll they'll be provisionally hired full time.
Yeah.
Like anything else, but uh instead of giving them the rate to the, we we gave the last three that went in, the two of them, we're getting eight fifty thousand. The other one going in at the class two, he just got to bump up uh to the full timer uh recently.
Could I uh, could you walk me through the process of when um we hire an officer, they're going to the academy contract, how how does that all happen? Like I had to pay to go to school, but do you make it and then we pay you to go to school? Walk me through the whole thing.
Right, so we're uh we have a hiring announcement open now, it's gonna close March seventh.
Hiring announcement is basically we are taking new applicants?
Correct. Uh we are uh accepting applications, we'll do the backgrounds, and it'll be provisionally hired upon the physical psychological evaluation and completion of the academy.
How long is this process, not including like the academy? Is it just, I like you, you're good, you said.
And I started the process now, so you got March, April, May, June, the academy starts July, so we're five months ahead right now. Um to get up the backgrounds, psychological, mandatory physical, uh and select the best candidate, right? Mike, one, you want to open a spot, yes, sir.
Okay.
How many people typically apply?
So give or take, right now we have about eight application.
Cool. Now, these people uh that have applied, have passed, uh have taken the civil service test already?
No, sir, so we opted to use the uh new incentive bill, unquote, the numbers, uh the barrel adopted last year so that we can hire outside of the civil service test.
I understand. What's the purpose of that?
The purpose of that is uh the test was a little bit old, we weren't sure um how exhausted the list was if we had any candidates that took the civil service test, if there was how far down the active list, or would we go to the county list? So rather than entertaining that option, we decided to go with the uh incentive bill.
Got it.
Otherwise, you gotta go with the that
Oh, I see.
Civil service.
Oh, you have to go with their ranking.
Yeah, and and during the third year of that, which could be well past every list that's been picked through, smart play.
And then, so if we say that they are fit, they're the one, we enroll them in the academy, we send them. Do they pay for the schooling or do we pay for the schooling?
They'll get paid by us while they're in the academy, at the academy rate, if we adopt.
Yeah, but the uh the schooling is free, I think, is the county county ones free? If you go to outside of county, you have to pay fifteen hundred dollars for school. Uh I think it's around roughly around that, they'll quote me on this, about fifteen hundred, right?
If we um, so then we give it an offer.
Psych eval and all that stuff.
So then we, they are offered a job contingent upon passing the academy?
Yes, sir.
If they don't pass the academy, we're still paying them let's say it's like fifty thousand for right now, that basically broken down for six months just to go to school?
They'll be paid a biweekly salary up until the point they do not graduate the academy.
Are they on the hope to pay it back, or it's just basically we just made it there and we have to eat that?
To my knowledge, it'd be our error.
And now, have they already signed a contract that they would be with us for a certain amount of time, or they could graduate the academy and they and they go work for somebody else?
So Chief Ellis has worked out an agreement with uh several officers they hired previous up to um to like a two-year contract, a commitment or an obligation to pay back the academy fees, the equipment, the psychological evaluation, a dollar amount.
Got it, invest.
But there's also a state statute that if a new academy graduate leaves within a certain period of time, we can seek contribution from the municipality that hired them.
That's a good one, okay. Thank you guys for all that. I like that second one as well.
Um and then the 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 other part of those, but the outside of the cap, I mean, outside of the contract is uh we talked about the uh the 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 uh committee talked about maybe possibly changing the uh waiver amount. Right now, the state statute of chapter seventy eight dictates that you can get twenty five percent of the uh at the your your deduction of what you have to contribute mi- uh minus the uh health insurance, times twenty five percent of the premium. That's your waiver up to five thousand dollars. So basically, if you're ten thousand dollars and you contribute a thousand dollars to the to the insurance, that's nine thousand dollars times point two five and that's how much you can get up to up for the waiver, which would be up to about twenty three hundred dollars, right? So you get uh, but you can only opt for five thousand, so family plans now are like forty five, forty six thousand dollars. State law dictates you have to do, you have to provide to the minimum of the five grand. I don't know, where the solicitor would have to answer this question. We wanna raise the waiver amount, so maybe more people might opt out and take the waiver, the savings cost for the barrel to ten thousand dollars. So we have like a couple of family plans that maybe people will opt out of the family plan and uh take the waiver amount, which will save the town thirty four thousand dollars each uh person that would do that possibly, and um and there is rumors that some people would do that possibly. So um and this could be a good way to try to see cut costs, but also give them a waiver for health insurance, because five thousand dollars is nothing for health insurance now for a family plan, for like I said, a family plan is over forty something thousand dollars, so um I don't know, could it could, because it's state law, I don't know, we can exceed the state law as a wa- waiver, I just don't see why we can't, but that'd be something you might have to be able to answer. But that's, but that's, but I think that's one of the things that the committee, the police committee, the county department of suggested that we do.
We were still kinda negotiating that number, but if, you know, if possible, it works out for both parties, right? So obviously, you know, whoever takes that out, they're making some more money, but we're also saving a ton around, so it's it's a win-win on both sides. Um it's something the school districts are throwing around a lot, obviously.
We did here where you have to choose the zero plan, and then it's, you know, you get only generics, things like that, like that was pretty good, save them a lot of money, and obviously, you can more raise. Is it similar to that?
We only have one plan here, like we are in a GIP, so we have one plan.
And that's it?
That's it.
Are you, do you have to have only one?
Well, you could have four, but the way the GIP works is uh you have to select the papers, but like there's all these different planes, like we're in the one plan, right, so and their contracts all stay equal or better, so it's already the top land.
Yeah.
So if you go down, then other things kick in where if you contribution to uh pension, I'm not pension, um prescriptions, you have to pay them back if they submit the prescription, like, you know, costs and stuff like that, so you're still paying the money anyway. So it doesn't really affect it, but you can keep the cost down of health insurance by uh changing your plan, but you can change it in a certain, say, like you, a couple of years ago, we did step therapy where you could, you had to do generic and step it up to using something that would not generic, like, you know what I mean, like something like that with a more more of a uh something that had a patent on it.
Yeah.
You know, the kind of thing, so we had step therapy, had to go through a process to get to that level. You couldn't just take the high expensive drug off the bat back, and I actually brought our premiums down, like instead of being a twenty percent increase that year, like only like a nine percent increase. So were there things we can do along the way? Next year, we're probably gonna have to increase the co-pays. But that's not, that's not, that's that nothing to do with the this part, the situation here.
I'd like to learn more, I'd like to learn more about that.
That's fine, it's all part of the GIP stuff.
Yeah, we haven't set it on a number yet as a committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Once we do, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be an increase, that's.
It'll be between seventy five hundred and ten thousand, I thought, that's what we were asked.
Would that be something we could do, though, like?
I have to look at check.
What's that? Yeah. Yeah, so. The what?
Usually very particular.
Oh, I know, the auditor spoke to pull it out and actually write it out, so why this person get a little bit more? So I would like, that's why I like to know, so. All right, so and that's uh that's pretty much all I had, and one thing I just wanna re- like reiterate on the um thing that I I reiterated earlier, that the the new exchange would not affect our drinking or water supply currently at the business. Does not affect anything of what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely not. Uh so I did speak to a couple of contractors, I could, did Ryan tell you I got one in right away? Uh we had a contractor come on site today, and I asked him, like, start to finish, like when the vessel gets in, how much downtime there is, three and a half days. Which is, uh just a saltwater, like no interruption whatsoever to water, zero, no.
And you, we had salt in it because it's really hard to pour.
Correct.
It's really hard.
Correct. We cannot not have a saltwater, we need a saltwater.
Just doesn't seem like we have one.
Well, it's it's been down, it's been repaired, it's been down, it's been repaired, so like when a hole gets in it, we gotta weld it, we have to let it, we have to drain it, then you have to slow fill it, you have to let it sit. Then you have to quick rinse it, then you put it back online.
How big of a tank is it, how big?
A twelve.
How many gallons, I guess, or?
Oh, I don't know, three thousand gallon? Yeah, it's a it's a big tank, it's as tall as a room. And as wide as, you know, four of these chairs. So it's not, it's not big, but it's not small. Like I said, this all happened within a, with within a a month. You know, holes, you come in one day and boom, we had one hole that happened a couple of months ago. We repaired it, everything's been good on the home front, and then now it's just like it it's just had it, it's just literally had it.
Tank couldn't be blind with some kind of?
We actually looked into that, like last time.
Yeah, like it's it's literally so thin, you can cut it with a box cutter. And there is no way without getting uh ultrasonic testing done, there's literally no way of telling, like you can cut this thing with a box cutter, then it has to be, it's it's past line, past line. I had a company come out, the dude, like, they would actually, like they line a sewer, they would line the inside of this tank, it's where it's not even there.
How long does it take to get to that point where it's, you've cut it with knife though?
You don't, you don't know, you you to open, you would have to open it to find out.
And how often do we open that?
You don't ever open these vessels, like when you change, when you change resin. So in two thousand eighteen, when we changed resin, there were some tuberculosis in the uh inside the vessel. I contacted our engineers, which are on site when this stuff is going on, took pictures, handed it to them. Everything's, I'm aware too much, it's whatever, you know, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, you know, they said it was fine. And it lasted, you know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, here we are, six and a half years later and it needs to be replaced, so.
So key engineering made the decision not to fix it.
Correct, or not that, not, well, there was nothing, they said there was nothing wrong with it at the time. I told them that I think it needs to be replaced, because the way I looked inside, they didn't feel as such, there were no holes in it at the time, or no water leaking. This was all within the last month, month, month and a half.
Could you cut it with a box cutter in eight twenty eighteen?
We never, you know, you'll try, we never tried to do such a thing, uh I mean.
I'm saying, could you?
I.
Could you have?
Uh I mean, it didn't look good inside, but what, like I said, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a steel expert or anything like that, it just warranted he's saying something at that point in time.
And there's not like a yearly inspection for this kind of thing?
No.
Like if you don't open it up?
No, no, nobody does, industry-wide, it's not that.
Not to get clean, not to get it's.
Not, they don't now, they're in operation all the time. Now, the only reason saltwater, so mind you, this thing is forty two years old. And the reason why it goes, they go bad, it's because you put salt in it all the time, and what the salt do, salt rock and metal, it just don't go together. So.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, the preventive maintenance has has not been done.
There's no preventative maintenance.
Well, forty two years old, somebody's gotta say, wait a minute, uh it's forty two years, the town's only a hundred years old, so it's half that age, come on.
Yo, that's not PM, that's just replacement, we're at that point now where it's it's useful, it's its useful life, like there is no useful life when a steel tank go with now.
But you had notified K and they decided not to do it.
Yeah, that it needs to be done at that time.
Have you notified them since then, like twenty eighteen, let's say it was worse in twenty twenty or?
Well, when it had, when it got the hole, when, well, there's no way to tell, so when it had the hole in it, you know, they, I told them that I had, you know, string a hole. Uh that's not in the scope, we'll have to, we'll have to deal with it after the the water.
Mike, could we have uh caught this earlier, like when we started this, all this other work, could we have caught that somehow?
I didn't, it had no holes in it, there's no way of, you know.
Forty years old, right, forty years old. Somebody, I I I'm just, I find it.
It's it's, I don't, I don't, I don't run my, you know.
I don't wanna beat a dead horse, so um it is what it is, so uh.
And listen, could it last another year? Absolutely, I I, you know, sure.
Oh, that, that, that's all. That's all working.
Like the guy came in today and said it's it's literally catastrophic failure, it needs to be replaced.
Today.
That thing burst from our.
Oh, it could, yeah.
What does that do to our our water? We can still run through with that?
Yeah, it's just not salt, it's just not salt, but for that, for the, for it to completely burst, if we just get a pinhole in it here and there, it's not something we've never had, like, there's no giant blowouts, this is industry-wide, like, every municipality with a water saltwater, they have holes in their tanks. This one is just too uncomfortable, too uncomfortable for me to handle. Like, there's plenty other towns that have, you know, sealing on them, welds, spot repairs, this, that, and the other. I'm not gonna put up with something like that, it has to be replaced. And for, and I know it's, it looks horrible to come to a time like this, but I it it's it's not lack of checking on equipment or anything like this, it's just something that happened.
And we did, we're doing it, and we did extensive
If you want me to, if you want me to ask.
Hope uh to the water plant back when we used the last USDA money. And we did all the valve replacement, all that stuff, so a lot of that stuff is new. After this is done, we're gonna be pretty much in a really good shape.
We're not trying to put, you know, point the finger, we're not pointing the finger, but you know, it's forty seven years old, and then boom, today like, that's the luck of Brooklyn or my luck, maybe it's me. So, uh, cause I have a thunder cloud in my head. Anyway, um It's not something that I want to put up. One more question, uh so we come to tenth, we have, we're gonna go online, right? Can we bypass that, go online?
No. Bypass the saltwater going online, there's no reason for you to bypass it.
I'm saying you're gonna replace it.
But yeah, in twenty four weeks at least, two months from now, at least two months from now. But yes, having, yes, we can bypass that tank when all this stuff is online, there will be zero interruption in water.
What I'm trying to say is you told me we have a catastrophic bill.
Right, well, well, when a, when a, when a pressurized vessel gets a hole, hole in it, it's considered catastrophic.
Can we eliminate using that until we get this new one?
There's no need to.
How about the?
We should, we should, there, it's not, it it needs to be replaced, but it's not, it's not.
It's not catastrophic, really.
The guys, I'll get you, I'll get your report from what the, what professional said, I'll have them come in and do, I just send them an email, your CC doing it, Ryan's CC doing it. I'll have him give you a whole professional synopsis. He told me that when a pressurized vessel gets a hole in it, it's considered a catastrophic failure. Not in the sense of it's not a part and can't be used, but we need, we don't need to get it replaced last year or next year, we need to get it replaced as soon as we can.
Okay, we do about this whole month ago?
But we were also looking at other options for the lining and all that stuff in last month, and then that happened again, and that's why we said we got, we gotta change the.
Like I've been, I've been sending emails back and forth to other purveyors about what what can we do, Hungerberry has been contacted. I have emails with them, I had to get our shop calling submitted over there, that takes them three weeks to get back to me. Hey, this is what we can do, we're looking for a vessel over here, then you have other people that aren't getting back to you, I literally have four quotes for them just for that. So it's been, it's been in the works, it's just something that just all of a sudden just came up.
I would just like to got, got a little bit of a heads up instead of being like
Yeah, there's no.
Online in front of everybody, and there's all in our tank today.
There's, I, there's no way to give anybody a heads up, it just.
No, I'm saying a month ago. If we could have known this is in the process.
So when, I I don't know what to say.
Well, like, like, like you said, it's, it's a bad day.
Well, any day would have been a bad day during the project, even if it was two months ago, there's no bad day, like.
All right, all right, let's, let's uh call it quick.
Sure. All right, so we we have nothing, um, no executive, um so we can just have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, quick.
What's that?
No executive?
No executive.
Okay, cool.
We've suspended it, all in favor?
Hi, hi. Thank you, everybody online, have a good night.
Too much, too much chlorine, and it will rust, stainless steel does not rust. Saltwater will be basically anything.
I just wanna ask you something.
And then, I only did mention about the uh cleaning of the shelf of the that we can look in.
I know.
I'm a bird, I'm sure you are, so.
Well, we did before, and that's the